Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to our City Council Chamber for tonight's City Council meeting and Committee of the Whole Meeting. I kindly ask our Recording Secretary, Ms. Fornari, seated to my right, to please take the roll call.
Mike Bruno?
Here.
Sarah Burkhardt?
Here.
Becky Ruby?
Here.
Gabriel Caven?
Here.
Dean Kilberg?
Here.
Brad Kocserag?
Here.
Craig Maladra?
Here.
Richard Marx?
Here.
Amy Mayer?
Here.
Robert Swanson?
Here.
We begin our council meetings, ladies and gentlemen, with the Pledge of Allegiance. I would like to invite a young lady named Victoria Vicki Kellick to please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a full house tonight for good reasons, and we're delighted that you're all here. We're going to begin our council meeting with a very special event, and that is to welcome my nomination to serve as the City of Geneva's Clerk. That nominator, or excuse me, the nominee is Vicki Kellick. The council members received an email from me, I believe it was on Friday, Thursday? Ms. Kellick, would you join us at the podium, despite you telling me you didn't want to?
Wonderful, thank you.
Welcome. As my email indicated, Ms. Kellick served with distinction on the Strategic Plan Advisory Committee, an extraordinary background, currently in the real estate world.
Correct.
Earned your J.D. degree.
I did, yes.
So she lives in the beautiful First Ward.
I do.
And when I reached out to Ms. Kellick, this is a quote now, she said, "Well, I'll have to get back to you." And then she called me an hour later and said, "I didn't want to seem too overenthused about it, but..." Isn't that right?
This is true.
That's right. So we're delighted to hear. Are there any questions or comments from Ms. Kellick prior to the administration of the oath? Ms. Berger?
Vicki, you're so excited, you're interested. What drew you to this position?
Thank you.
And what do you think you'll bring to it?
Well, what drew me here was, obviously, Mayor Burns talking to me a little bit about it, but I very much wanted to be involved. I was involved with the city before, as the mayor said, with SFAK, and looking to get involved again, and so this was a great opportunity, and hopefully I can bring good note-taking skills to it.
Good.
And whatever else you need from me.
Awesome, well, thank you for stepping forward.
Thank you.
And Ms. Kellick, I would be remiss if I didn't ask you to introduce your fan club tonight.
Oh.
You almost forgot, didn't you?
I did, I did, on purpose, almost. My husband beat me, I drove here and my husband beat me here separately. This is my husband, Gene Kellick.
Good evening, sir.
Unless he misbehaves, in which case I have no idea.
Yes, we actually fully vetted him, so there's a...
Wonderful, thank you.
We'll have to have a closed session after the regular meeting.
Of course.
Anyone else? Comments, questions for Ms. Kellick? Is there a motion to so approve the nomination of Ms. Kellick as City of Geneva Clerk?
Second.
Ms. Burkhardt makes the motion?
Second.
Mr. Bruno makes the second. A voice vote is sufficient. All those in favor of appointing Vicki Kellick as City of Geneva Clerk, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? There you go.
Thank you.
Now, we're going to administer the oath to you.
All right.
I know Mr. Kellick wants to take some pictures.
You don't get out a lot, so... Really exciting.
Yeah, exactly. It's black. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to ask Ms. Kellick to raise her right hand and repeat after me. I, Victoria Kellick.
I, Victoria Kellick.
Having been duly appointed to the office of Clerk of the City of Geneva.
Having been duly appointed to the office of Clerk of the City of Geneva.
County of Kane, Apparsent.
County of Kane, Apparsent.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Geneva Code of Ordinances.
The Geneva Code of Ordinances.
And that I will faithfully discharge these duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge these duties.
Of the Clerk according to the best of my abilities.
Of the Clerk according to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Senator. Gene has it up there.
We're going to invite our Clerk to join us at the podium. Ladies and gentlemen, without objection, I'd like to jump to item 3(c), as in cool, to recognize our Geneva Middle School Leo Club participants for their extraordinary effort on the Ukraine fundraiser. I know we have a spokesperson for the group. If not, I just choose one... Okay, come on up, man. Someone else is jo... Oh, good, someone else is going to join you. And we're going to ask for you to please introduce yourselves.
I'm Brennan Vostel.
And, young lady?
How do you do?
Welcome. I understand you have about an hour presentation.
No.
We've been watching these lovely slides all evening. We should probably turn off that middle light, because, just for better viewing, but... And I have heard from several of the Lions Club members what an extraordinary job you did and how much you enjoyed doing what you did. Would you care to add to that?
About the Ukraine fundraiser, about Leo's Club?
About the Ukraine fundraiser, because I've got enough dirt on the Leo members, so it's like...
It was a very fun fundraiser, just for the cause and everything, and it was fun to try to, like, to see the cans of change fill up, but it was also kind of hard to count the money every study hall.
So you counted it every study hall?
Yeah.
And it just kept rising?
It did.
That's amazing. And what was the thought process behind doing this? Just, you felt you had to... Come on up. You felt you had to do something, correct?
Right.
This is Ms. Byers, ladies and gentlemen.
Hello.
You've been with the middle school for how long now?
Twenty-two years.
My lord, is that right?
Yeah.
I went to high school with Ms. Byers' brother.
He's older than me.
Yes, he is much older than you.
Definitely. Okay, so we... Actually, I had kids approach me and say, "What can we do as Leo's Club? What can we do?"
Nice.
So I reached out to the Lions member, being a Lion member myself, and I said, "What do we have going on with the Lions International?" And they gave me information back, and so we wanted to do the best we could, so what better way than make it a competition of sabotage at the same time? So tell them exactly how this works.
A competition and what?
A sabotaging competition to each team, to raise money, and then you put coins in differently to...
Ah, okay. Is this sabotage?
I did say sabotage.
Oh, you did say sabotage?
Oh.
Okay.
Normally, this little thing is called Penny's War, but we thought it's not appropriate, so we do pennies per piece.
Absolutely.
But we still wanted to play the game, so you guys can talk a little bit about the sabotaging.
Well, this is fun. We have middle schoolers talking about sabotage. If this doesn't go viral, nothing will, so...
Well, we would... It would be against our teams, because there's an eighth grade team and, like, all the other teams are white and blue, and every dollar or any other coins or whatever, other than a penny, would go into other things and go as negative points.
Oh.
And only pennies would be positive points towards our team.
And I understand some people put in dollars.
Yes.
Which then require the other groups to either fill with pennies, because you wanted to exceed what was raised, but it was penalized anyways. Wow. That's pretty wild.
The winning team got donuts, too, so it helped everybody.
Yeah, motivation.
Well, that was very generous of the school district to buy donuts. That was really...
It was a lot of donuts.
Was there a lot of donuts? Yeah? And we have some distinguished members of the Lions Club here tonight, and I know, and I don't want to speak on their behalf, but I know they're extraordinarily proud of you. Do you feel that pride?
Yes, for sure.
What do you think your fundraiser... What message does it convey to your colleagues at the schools and perhaps students throughout Geneva?
It kind of, like, told everybody how, like, it's important to, like, stand up for what's right and just to give back to people.
How to work together as a community to help.
That's sweet. That's very nice. Are there any Lions Club members who wish to speak? Oh, gosh, yeah, this guy.
Yeah, you don't have to ask me twice.
No, clearly, he came prepared, too. Holy lord.
One thing that hasn't been mentioned is the amount of money that the Leo's Club raised.
I was going to ask that next.
You could hold this. The total amount raised by the Leo's Club was $5,100... And as a result of this, the Lions Club itself has a new challenge from the Leo's to do as well per capita that they did. It's really been a fantastic effort, and we're so proud of everyone involved in Leo's.
You got some good press in the papers, too.
Yeah.
Not too shabby, man. Did you go out and buy a bunch of those papers? Well, who else would like to speak? Ms. Byers?
I just wanted you to see how many Leo's Clubs came, number came today.
Could you? Yeah, I want... Oh, look at this. You guys like to do a big group picture?
That'd be great.
Well, not here, but I mean... I'm kidding. How about a big group shot with, of course, the facsimile check? This is like the Jerry Lewis telephone over again, folks. Yes, now, before the Leo Club members leave, we're going to put the podium back to its spot. I want, Ms. Byers, if any other students wish to speak or perhaps share a message?
Anybody else? No? No? It's been a pleasure working with these kids, and they're coming your way soon.
And, Ms. Byers, I need... We know this, of course, instinctively, but the money will be used for...
The money is going to be used for the displaced refugees.
Very nice. Very nice.
Correct?
And Mr. Kilberg has a comment or question?
Sure.
I think this is really fantastic, and I think this is a real civics lesson for the students as well. I see here it says that the Geneva Middle Schools participated in this competition, and there's probably some building pride that would... They'd want to share this evening. Was it between North and South? It wasn't explained.
So we had a competition at South between the teams there, and then the North did their own thing. We did not compete against each other as schools.
Okay, so it was within the building then?
Right.
Okay, great, that's fantastic.
I mean, let's be honest, when it comes to the end, we always want to see who does more, and I will give it up to North. They actually collected more than we did.
No, thank you, and I'm going to ask the students, do you know what we're going to be celebrating in '22-26?
Our good way.
The Declaration of Independence, our 250th anniversary, and just as we went through our fight for freedom against Great Britain in 1776, the Ukrainian people are going through that same exercise, and this is an important civics lesson in the importance of democracy and fighting for freedom. And again, I think it's great that you've gotten involved and that you supported the Lions' effort. Well done. Keep it up.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the dais, or any other students? Moms and dads?
Super proud of these kids.
I do have a text that the City of St. Charles is going to actually match what you raised. Mr. Bruno? They are now. Mr. Bruno, sir.
Thank you. And the... So the money you've raised, does that... Will that go to a particular organization that the Lions have selected, or does the Lions have their own...
The Lions Club has... The International Lions Club, which, as most of us know, has a organization just like ours, and almost every country and city in the world raises money when any one country gets into trouble like this, and the money was actually sent to those Lions Clubs that are near Poland and the Ukraine to make sure that this money is distributed to those who really need it, and it all goes to that. There's no administrative cost that comes out of that. And the reason we are, as Lions, so proud of all these students is because we already know that they are going to be our future, not only Lions members, but they give back to communities, and they are just so open in the way they want to help others, and so we're very proud of them.
Thank you.
Students, as part of your leadership, you are required to stay the entire evening, so thank you very much. But if you need to sneak out, we totally understand. If any of you have homework, I will be happy to sign a note saying you don't need to do it. Of course, I was held back in middle school, so that's the whole thing. Without objection, ladies and gentlemen, from the council, I'd like to jump to item 3(c), as in David, Proclaiming May as Mental Health Awareness Month. Is there a motion?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Swanson. We do have some special guests with us this evening as well. Ms. Vargas, I believe, is going to be joining us and at the podium. Escorted by Chairwoman Shogren of the Geneva Mental Health Board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
I just really want to shine the spotlight on Mrs. Michelle Vargas-Herbst, because she is one of the sponsors of the Peer Leadership Program at the high school, and they worked in conjunction with the Students Against Destructive Decision Club in helping tie green ribbons and raise awareness for mental health, which may is our National Mental Health Month. So I'm going to let Michelle explain what they're doing at the high school.
And the green ribbons are nice and visible.
Yes.
Well done.
One other point. Ms. Byers over here has two hats tonight, because she, as a sponsor of the Leo's Club at the middle school, they also got involved in the ribbon tying, and so she should be commended for that as well.
Indeed.
So, hello.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Michelle Vargas-Herbst. I am one of the school psychologists of Geneva High School. So I just am going to talk to you guys about what we're doing at the high school. It is May Mental Health Month. So this week, we decided to make it, like, a festive week, I guess you could say. So each day, we tried to do something today was move it forward, and we had the kids encouraged, the students, to wear college gear, or if they're going into the military, something like that, or into the trades. And tomorrow is Twin Tuesday, and so the theme for that one is that you're never alone, okay? And we're encouraging all the staff to wear their "Here for You" T-shirts, which is what I'm wearing now. And then Wednesday, we have different... Wednesday's Green Day for mental health. Thursday is tie dye. You're never... You're different backgrounds, different colors of mental health. And then Friday's Comfort Day, comfy day, to just be comfortable with yourself. We do some other things. PLP has, as well as Student Advisory Board, did some positive messages that we put into throughout the school, you know, for Valentine's Day, for St. Patrick's Day. We did snowflakes, just positive encouraging things, like, "You're amazing, hang in there," that kind of thing. We are currently doing a mural in... Under the Student Advisory Board. We're going to start that this weekend, looking again at some positive affirmations, kind of giving some encouragement to everybody. We're just doing it by one of the bathrooms by the community room, if you ever go to the high school. I don't know. I think that's about all we've done. We're going to do chalk drawing. We tried to do it today, but couldn't because of the weather, so we're going to try to do that later on. But the purpose of it is to encourage the communication of mental health and also to, you know, just know that you're not by yourself, you know, that there are people there available to help you, not only your friends, but we encourage a trusted adult as well. Okay?
How's everything at the high school?
It's great.
In your professional opinion? Life is good?
You know, it has been a very interesting two years.
Indeed.
Right? For everybody. I think that we have people who... Mental health definitely bubbled up, right? If you were already dealing with some anxiety or depression, and then you had isolation, that made it even worse, right? So trying to work around that, encourage and support, it's been, I'm not going to lie, it's been challenging, but, you know, we got some great people working there, great social workers, psychs, counselors, and we work really hard all together to do preventative things, not just, you know, in the moment that it happens to, but just trying to, you know, support each other as well as the students.
What would your message, or what is your message to the adults in the community?
Hmm.
Because, obviously, I would think anyways, you would echo the statements that the adults as well.
Yeah.
Have sometimes mental health challenges.
Yes.
And we, as adults, sometimes aren't as brave to announce, to admit, to acknowledge.
Right, right. I guess my biggest thing for adults would be communicate, you know? Don't keep it inside. It's going to come out somehow, you know, stomach ache, headache, whatever, you know? It will come out. So just kind of communicate. Try to find your trusted people. You know, there's a lot of support there, you know, and just keep the positive. I know that sometimes it feels really down, but if you can try to find some positive or just those that... Those negative thought-thinking, you know? Try to help yourself go through those. I think that's helpful. And if I was talking to you, if you have a child or something, just remember developmentally appropriate, right?
Right.
You know, your high school... High schooler can handle something more than your middle schooler, your elementary kid, so...
If you'll permit me to open it up to the dais, I'd invite any of the council members to either ask a question or make a comment.
Mm-hmm.
And we're delighted, we're proud of the work you do.
Yeah, thank you, yeah.
Is there anything we can do as well to support you?
No, I think these are great things. I think that the visuals of the ribbons are great, and I just think communication is just the biggest thing. So we do appreciate that acknowledgement, too. It does go a long way.
Good, good. Well, we have a motion, and we have a second to approve the proclamation. A voice vote is sufficient. All those in favor of proclaiming May 2022 as Mental Health Awareness Month in the City of Geneva, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Unanimous.
All right, great.
And I've got a proclamation for you as well, so I'll bring it over to you, if that's okay.
Oh, great, okay.
Madam Chair, you want to say... Absolutely.
I just wanted to also thank some of the businesses in town who are allowing us to tie green ribbons on their property. Shonin Incorporated, Grams, The Chamber, we were able to do the, I call it, the Christmas tree on the courthouse lawn, and City Hall as well.
Absolutely.
So, thank you, thank you.
And we have ribbons at the high school and at both middle schools, too.
Yes, yes. And there's a program at the library tomorrow afternoon that is... The subject matter is one woman, I think it's titled "One Woman Hamlet: Shakespeare's Attempt at Erasing Stigma," and she takes the audience through a personal journey regarding how she has handled anxiety and depression. So that's 1:30 to 3:00 at the library tomorrow.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Can I present to you the proclamation?
Sure.
Oh, okay, all right. Okay.
Smart move. Good answer. Mrs. Spinson, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, circling back to item 3(b), as in boy, is the public hearing on ordinance number 2022-22 vacating and selling Colony Drive. This is a public hearing. I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing for this matter and this matter alone.
So moved.
Motion by Bruno, seconded by Mayor. All in favor of opening the public hearing, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The public hearing is open. We invite anyone joining us, either here in the chamber or remotely, if they wish to speak to, ask questions about, or provide statements regarding this matter. You're welcome to do so at this time. Yes, sir?
Might I come up here?
Please do.
Okay.
How are you?
My name is Bruce Clemza. I live at 281 West Haven Circle, directly across from Anne Sepulowski, who's, I believe, trying to purchase this little parcel of land. So I just came here really to support her and, you know, let you know that she's a great neighbor, she's obviously goes out of her way, she's been taking care of this, you know, little parcel of land that was supposed to be a street that passed through years ago, and really been maintaining it and keeping it up. I can only imagine she'll continue to do so if she takes control of it and owns it. So that's really all I had to say, unless you have any questions for me about the neighborhood. I mean, it's, again, something I think she's done out of the goodness of her heart, because I've been there 16 years, and I can't remember ever seeing the city mow it, and I'm sure maybe they did years ago. My memory is not what it used to be, but I can't remember the last time anybody came out and took care of the land, and she's been doing it along with the neighbor on the other side of the parcel, and they usually, you know, just took care of mowing it and weeding it and all that. So I hope that helps in whatever decision you make.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Yep, you're welcome.
Mr. Philip Chuck?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. John Philip Chuck, attorney with offices at 111 East Jefferson Avenue in Naperville, Illinois. I'm here this evening representing Anne Marin, the owner of the property at 278 West Haven Circle, requesting the vacation of Colony Drive. You recall some months ago, I was back before you, and unfortunately, we had an absent member that evening, and we didn't have the requisite number of votes to proceed, so we decided to, at the urging of some of the council members, to increase the amount that she is willing to pay to the city for the vacation of the property to $4,000. And we also agreed to add the easements that the Public Works Department was looking for on the property, so that you can properly maintain any future utility extensions or any of the utilities that are currently located out there. The... As the neighbor pointed out, Ms. Marin has been maintaining the property for about 28 years. And we also agreed to add the easements that the Public Works Department was looking for on the property so that you can properly maintain any future utility extensions or any of the utilities that are currently located out there. The, as the neighbor pointed out, Ms. Marin has been maintaining the property for about 28 years now, and certainly has shown good stewardship with the land. And if the council chooses to vacate this, this land and sell it to her, it would be wonderful because she would then be able to control it solely, as she has done for all these years. And so she respectfully requests that you pass this ordinance. As a result of the statute, the way the state statute reads, it does require a supermajority, so it requires eight votes, which includes the mayor, to adopt the sale. My understanding of what has happened with these kinds of things in the past, not necessarily with this council, but with some, that the properties were conveyed to owners when they requested a vacation in instances like this, there was no charge. The city did not charge them for it. So you'd be establishing a new precedent by having this young lady pay for the property. So we would hope that that would be considered a good consideration for the city, plus the fact of the years of maintenance that she's done on it, and the money that she has saved the city in not having to maintain the property. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
This is a public hearing, ladies and gentlemen. Is there anyone joining us remotely, Mr. McCready or Ms. Dawkins? Anyone with their hand raised? Anyone else in the chamber wishing to comment on this matter? Let me consult with the city attorney for just one moment. Last call for anybody. If not, just as a reminder, a public hearing is not the opportunity to cross-examine or ask questions or what have you. It's just a matter of folks who are interested in the issue to present whatever comments they'd like. So in that regard, unless there is anyone else who wishes to do so, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to close the public hearing.
There you go.
Well, I was just gonna say, I know last time people... Hi, everyone. I'm Anne, and last time, some people had some questions. I'm happy to have John, you know, represent, because it's been something this has dragged on for years. But if you have any questions of me, please ask me. That's why I'm here. I definitely would say that the local paper, when I walk my dog, neighbors have said, wow, I didn't, you know, I didn't even realize that the city owns the property, that it's been maintained very well, you know, for all these years. I literally, at six o'clock after I got home from work, had a landscaper coming over to do my yard with mulch, but he also mulches the trees that are there and, you know, everything else. So I do take pride in that, and I, you know, I do know that it's a very unique and rare situation, but, you know, what came up, but at some point, I think we need to just, you know, nail this down and finalize it. So any questions, please let, please ask.
And any questions for the applicant and/or the applicant's attorney can be done so during the deliberation period. I will entertain the motion to adjourn, or excuse me, to close the public hearing again from the distinguished Alderman of the Third Ward, Mr. Kilburg.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Koserog, equally distinguished from the Second Ward. All in favor of closing the public hearing, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The public hearing on this matter is closed. You'll note in the agenda, this is taken up later in the agenda, so. Item 3E, as in Edward, is the reappointment of city officials. You have that list before you. I do believe it's only fair and fitting to offer our appreciation, our respect, demonstrate our value, and how honored we are to work with the officials being so recommended. So I hope the council will consider that and pass this unanimously. Are there any questions, comments? Entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Swanson. Seconded by Mr. Marks. All in favor of reappointing the city officials? That list is provided, also appearing on our website in the council packets. Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Congratulations and thank you. Item F, folks, consider mayor's appointment of Mr. Craig Maladra to office of Mayor Pro Tem.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bruno with extraordinary enthusiasm. Seconded by Mr. Koserog. Since Mr. Maladra is now retired officially, you can mow the grass. All in favor of the appointment, ladies and gentlemen, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed, or anyone wishes to abstain? Very well, congratulations, Craig. Thank you very much. Item G, consider approval of special event application from the Geneva Chamber of Commerce for Swedish Days Festival and Parade, June 22nd through 26th, 2022, with requests for use of public right-of-way and city services. Is there a motion? Motion by Mr. Caven. Seconded by Mr. Swanson. Steph? Shouldn't it be City Administrator Dawkins? Sorry about that.
That's okay, at least I'm still here. The Geneva Chamber is planning their annual Swedish Days Festival and Parade, as stated, on June 22nd through the 26th. This event utilizes multiple downtown locations and requires significant city services, including but not limited to street closures, traffic control, onsite public safety personnel, utility personnel, and services including electric and water, trash collection and distribution, and event promotion. All city departments have reviewed the application and recommend approval. And then I do wanna just touch briefly on the next item to save some time. So the second item will be consideration of an IDOT resolution authorizing the temporary closure of Route 38 for the parade on Sunday, June 26th. So with us this evening, I know, I see that we have President Paula Schmidt from the Chamber, the Chairman Scott Lieben, and then we also have on city staff, Director Timoshenko, if you have any additional questions.
For the members of the City Council, any questions or comments for either of those identified as joining us this evening? Mr. Koserog?
I was just wondering if they could tell us a little bit about what's new or back to new? I think I noticed more in the packet, and exciting about this coming Swedish Days.
Very excited to come up here and actually talk about a full Swedish Days, so that's, we're very excited about that. Before I do start that, I wanna say thank you so much to all of the city, all the departments. It was such a pleasure working with them now, and it's been just fantastic, and we had a lot to accomplish. And I think we did a lot, and I just wanna say thank you, 'cause I appreciate that. Swedish Days, so it will, a few of the, it'll basically be a full Swedish Days like you're used to in 2019, if anyone remembers back then. But we are gonna change things, like the 5K will now be at the new Northwestern Cross Country Course. So it will be there on a Thursday evening, and that group is helping us to organize two races that will be going on that evening to start to utilize that property a little bit more. The Settlers' Breakfast is going to be moved from the Geneva Country Club to the Copper Fox. So if anybody knows anyone, please let them know, because we're making a move on that, a little bit bigger space and a little bit easier on the staff at the Chamber to work it somewhere like that. Kids' Day will stay as it was in 2020 at the library. So we are, I don't know if anyone went there last year, but we moved it to the library because we weren't sure we would have street approval at that time in, last year, for a festival. So it was in the parking lot at the, the library. Fantastic. The kids loved it. We had such good, positive response from that, that we're gonna put it back there again. So gonna have the kids' parade again, too, so get those bikes ready. And then again, we're, the music's coming back downtown. We're bringing the parade back, so we're excited about that, so. But other than that, it's basically the same, but with a little bit odds and different additions.
Thought I said something maybe about a craft addition this year, or...
You know what, it's called, it's the Swedenvast part that we had before, but this year, we're actually putting it in an area, and they're, they're gonna be able to sell Swedish products. So again, something new that we worked with Kathleen on, so that they could actually sell Swedish items. And that's Saturday and Sunday in the judge's parking lot in, on James.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Sounds exciting.
I'm excited.
Anyone else in the dais? And allegedly, it should be in the mid-50s by then, correct?
I know. I just don't want rain. I don't mind the cold, it's the rain. Any other questions?
Anything, folks? We have a motion by Caven, a second by Swanson. All in favor of their request, detailed in item 3G, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Congrats. Item 3H is similar. Consider Resolution Number 2022-35, requesting closure of traffic lanes on State Route 38 for the Swedish Days Parade, June 26, 2022.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bruno. Seconded by Mr. Koserog. All in favor of that request, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Item H is adopted unanimously. Thank you. We're at item four, folks, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments this evening? Item five is the Omnibus Agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine by this council, and those items can be considered and voted upon with one motion. Is there a motion? Mr. Swanson makes the motion. Mr. Marks makes the second. Any questions, any comments regarding the omnibus? Ms. Fenari, whenever you're ready, or Ms. Kelly, whenever you're ready, please take the roll.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Koserog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
The Omnibus Agenda has been approved with 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes. We jump to item number 10, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask Ms. Fenari to read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration, and then we all wait with bated breath for Alderman Bruno to make the statement he's so famous for making.
Total expenditures for this report, total $1,426,088.75.
Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read the individual items. The add-up to that amount can be found in tonight's City Council Packet on the city website.
Without a teleprompter, no less. Is there a second to that?
Second.
What was I gonna call that? It's like a soliloquy. Seconded by Koserog. Any questions at all about the bills that have been motioned and seconded for approval? A vote is in order. Ms. Fenari, whenever you're ready, please take the vote.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Koserog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
The bills have been approved, the 10 affirmative votes, the zero nay votes. They will be paid within the next 10 years, so. Anyone tuning into this thing is probably thinking... Item, we're on our item 12, folks. 12A is consider approval of Resolution Number 2022-39, authorizing the execution of a Second Amendment to a parking lot lease with St. Mark's Church for a two-year extension.
So moved.
Motioned by Kilburg, seconded by Mayor. Ms. Dawkins?
Sure. For your consideration this evening, as stated, it is an extension to the lease between the city and St. Mark's Church. The city leases the lot for public parking for the amount of the annual property taxes, plus $1,500 in liability insurance. The city is responsible for maintenance. For example, the lot was repaved in 2002 at a cost of $60,000. The lease permits St. Mark's limited parking for the rector and staff, and the ability to close the lot on two Sundays a year for church events from April 1st to November 7th, excluding city festival dates. The lease term is May 1, 2003, to April 30, 2022, with the original lease dating back to 1976. The lease provisions provide for a five-year extension, as outlined in Article 11, and the city has requested that we amend this to allow for a two-year lease extension. This time period will allow the lease to be more closely synchronized with the term of the Special Services Area 1, which is the funding source for payment, and as you all may recall, SSA Number 1 is set for renewal in 2023. St. Mark's has agreed to the change and has signed the Second Amendment as presented. And if there are any questions, I know Director Timoshenko is here. I don't know if anybody from St. Mark's is here? No. So if there's any additional questions, Kathleen would be happy to answer those for you.
Any questions from the dais, for either Ms. Timoshenko or Ms. Dawkins? We have a motion by Kilburg, a second by Mayor. A roll call vote is in order. Ms. Fenari, whenever you're ready, please.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Koserog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
With a vote of 10 in the affirmative, zero in the negative, item 12A has been adopted by this council. Item 12B is to consider approval of Resolution Number 2022-40, authorizing the purchase of a John Deere sidewalk machine from AHW LLC through Sourcewell in an amount not to exceed $54,625.62. Is there a motion to approve? I think that was Ms. Burkhardt, and seconded by Mr. Marks. Ms. Dawkins?
So the fiscal year 2023 budget, which by the way, just started yesterday, has funds allocated to replace the 2005 John Deere sidewalk machine. The machine is primarily used for snow removal in the downtown. During the summer months, the machine is used for drainage, swale cleaning, and other small jobs. The recommendation before you this evening is to purchase a John Deere 1575 sidewalk machine with attachments, as indicated in the packet, through the Sourcewell contract. As you'll recall, Sourcewell does all of the bidding, and we can just purchase off of that without having to rebid everything. We do have Superintendent Landers with us this evening, if you have any additional questions.
Any questions for the superintendent? Mr. Kilburg?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. I realize the machine's 17 years old, and it's probably, well, it's close to its last leg?
Yes, very much so.
What are intentions as far as the old piece of equipment? That wasn't referenced in the documentation.
That will be declared surplus, and we will try to get some sort of return on it.
We don't plan to use it as a backup or keep it in inventory then?
No, we have two machines.
Because it didn't show a trade-in value at all, so. Would that have been with Elburn directly, if we would've traded it in, or?
AHW is the Elburn dealer, obviously. They did not want it.
They didn't want it.
There's not much left of the frame to it.
And my second question was, I see that we had a number of different attachments that came with that. Were any of the attachments able to be transferred from the old piece to the new piece, or has it all changed that much?
It's all changed enough to where we could not use the attachments that we already had. That was the very first question we asked.
And the, and the third point was, have, have we looked at possibly disposing of some of those attachments? Because there might be other people out there looking for a specific attachment, and it might actually provide the city with more of a return than selling it as a whole, a whole piece of equipment.
Yeah, absolutely. We can sell the attachments separately through, through the iBID process.
Are we planning to do that?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, okay, very good. Well, thank you.
Anyone else in the dais, for our superintendent? We have a motion by Burkhardt, and a second, oops, excuse me, and a second by Marks. Ms. Fenari, whenever you're ready, please take the roll.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Koserog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Item 12B has been adopted by this council with a vote of 10 in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Item 12C, consider approval of Resolution Number 2022-41, authorizing a waiver of the bidding process and execution of an agreement with First Inspection Services Incorporated for plumbing, plan review, and inspection services as presented. Is there a motion? Mr. Marks makes the motion. Seconded by Ms. Burkhardt. Ms. Dawkins?
Sure. So the City of Geneva is required by state law to provide professional review and inspection services for all new and/or modified plumbing systems within the corporate limits. Since 2013, the city has worked alongside First Inspection Services in providing quality residential, commercial, and industrial plumbing inspections. For your consideration this evening, is an independent contractor agreement for the term May 2nd, 2022, through April 30, 2024. The fee schedule would remain the same, while the inspection hours have increased, as outlined in the agenda packet. Fees associated with the inspection are borne by the permit applicant, along with a 10% administrative fee to cover city staff time for permit intake, data entry, permit review coordination, inspection scheduling, collection of reinspection fees, and the issuance of final approvals and certificates of occupancy. It looks like we have David de Groot with us this evening to answer any questions you might have.
And I would just reiterate, it's a pass-through fee, so again, it's all borne on the applicant, not on the city.
Questions for Mr. de Groot. Ms. Burkhardt?
Thanks, David. At one point, were we looking, and maybe this is a Stephanie question, at one point, were we looking to hire someone who would be a certified plumber, and who would have done maybe two jobs, right?
Yes, we were looking at that maybe two or three years ago now. We were looking at a combination inspector that would be in-house, both a plumbing inspector and building inspector. done maybe two jobs, right?
Yes, we were looking at that maybe two or three years ago now. We were looking at a combination inspector that would be in-house, both a plumbing inspector and building inspector.
And has that been just impossible to find in this labor market?
It was difficult to find a candidate then, yes.
I was going to say, we had it, I think we tried on two separate occasions, long before the labor market got so tight, and we just weren't getting any qualified applicants. And so we've kind of gone this route, and it's worked pretty well. It seems like a good solution. I mean, we're going on almost 10 years with this company now, and, okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? We have a motion by Marks and a second by Burkhardt. Ms. Fornari, please take the roll.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kozarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Item 12C has been adopted with 10 affirmative votes, 0 nay votes. Item 12D, consider approval, excuse me, approval of ordinance Number 2022-21 granting variations to increase the allowable lot coverage from 45% to 47.15%, and to decrease the required side yard setbacks... Wait, forgive me, ladies and gentlemen, this matter...
You can read it all and then continue.
Okay. "To decrease the required yard, side yard, and rear yard setbacks from 5 feet to 1.5 feet for a detached garage at the northeast corner of Fulton Street and Fifth Street." Prior to a motion and a second, I believe I announced to the council via email that the applicant who had wished to speak to this matter unfortunately is ill this evening, so we will be deferring this matter to a future date. I apologize for going through the entire reading of that matter. So if there's no objection, we'll proceed accordingly. It'll likely be May the 16th. Is there anyone here for that matter? Stricken from the agenda, ladies and gentlemen. Apologies for unnecessary reading of it. Item 12E, consider approval of ordinance Number 2022-22 vacating and selling Colony Drive, a public right-of-way located in the West Haven of Geneva subdivision. Motion by Ms. Mayor?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bruno. Ms. Dawkins?
Okay, so the West Haven of Geneva subdivision and planned unit development was approved by the City of Geneva in 1992. The PUD allowed for the development of a single-family subdivision and a commercial retail and office development. The two areas were planned to be connected by a public street. The residential subdivision was developed, and the 66-foot-wide Colony Drive right-of-way was dedicated between lots 18 and 19 to provide for future connection to the planned commercial area. In 2003, the city approved a planned unit development allowing for the phased construction of the First Baptist Church on the site, no longer requiring a connection to the residential subdivision via Colony Drive. Ann Marin, owner of Lot 19, which is 278 West Haven Circle, has petitioned the city to vacate Colony Drive and sell the property to her for the sum of $4,000. Ms. Marin has maintained the unimproved right-of-way since she purchased her home in 1994. The Public Works Department has reviewed the request and identified that there are public utilities located within the right-of-way, including a water main, a sanitary sewer main, and electric cables. Therefore, the platification includes a 10-foot public utility easement along the western portion of the right-of-way and 20-foot easements along the north and south portions of the right-of-way. In accordance with Section 11911 of the Illinois Municipal Code, notice of the public hearing on the requested platification was provided to the other adjoining property owners, which are just the ones living at 290 West Haven Circle and Chapel Street Church on Kessinger Road, and was published in the Daily Herald on April 7, 2022. I would note, it is a supermajority of the council members. It does not include the mayor. And then we do also have, obviously, the applicant and her attorney are here this evening, as well as Director de Groot, if you have any additional questions.
For the dais, any questions for either the applicant or Mr. de Groot? Or for that matter, Mr. Babica? Mr. Bruno, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. I was that missing vote, so I apologize for not being here, whether it was travel or illness or what have you. Yeah, I considered this property, and I was on both sides of the fence at one point, but the reality is, this is only a liability to the city. I don't think it's appropriate that we should concern ourselves that we, that it is more valuable to the one property owner. If we could put it out for bid, if it was realistic to have it out for bid, then I might not agree to this number, but I'm perfectly comfortable at this point with vacating the property as the agenda item indicates. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on the dais? Ms. Mayor, and I believe Mr. Kilburg?
Last time we voted on this, the mayor was included, or is this a different construction of this?
I don't think he was included.
No?
No.
Okay, so supermajority is...
I just wanted to make sure it's clear.
You need eight.
Need eight, okay. Yeah, he voted last time.
Yeah, I think I did too, yeah.
Well, we verified with the statute this evening, and it is just the council members.
Pre-forc'd.
So, okay, so we need eight again. Obviously, I haven't changed my position on this. I still think that this has found money, and that we should celebrate the fact that she's taken care of it for this long, and that she's going to give us any money for the property is a good thing, because nobody else would buy it. And I think you, I think everybody here knows that, and if we got an estimate, if we got an appraisal, it would all be beneficial to one of our citizens, perhaps, but not that we lost money. We're not losing any money here. So I hope that everybody will support this. I'm hoping that some of the nay votes last time can change, because obviously, this has been going on for a long time for the citizen of Geneva, and she has come here thinking that we needed eight people, including someone who voted positive last time, and now it's 10 people, so we're a little bit in a disadvantage, and she might have to pay her lawyer again to come here and try to work this out again. So we could put it all to bed tonight and stop talking about Colony Drive, which the developer never intended it to be an amenity space, never intended to have it rebuildable. Developers don't do that. This was purely because it was, at one time, planned to be a street, and then it's not. So it wasn't ever Geneva property to begin with. That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Kilburg, sir?
Really, my opinion as it relates to this matter really hasn't changed. I appreciate the additional $500, but I think if we are realistic about the value of real estate in Geneva, a $4,000 offer for any piece of property in Geneva really isn't realistic. I think that we've had this piece of property now for 19 years, and, you know, I don't see why there has to be a great urgency to dispose of it at this point in time. I think that we've had issues previously where we disposed of property where they ultimately were developed, and, true, they brought tax revenue to the community with the construction of a home, but that parcel probably is worth a lot more than what we sold it for to that resident that at the time told us that they weren't planning to develop it into anything. So I think there's some history here that this piece of property, if it's assembled by one of the adjacent neighbors, is going to be worth a whole lot more than the $4,000 figure that's been offered. Now, I know people are probably frustrated with that, but I think we have both an obligation, not only to the resident, the adjacent neighbor that did maintain the property, but I think we also have a responsibility to the taxpayer. And again, this piece of property, if it was to be appraised, probably would generate for the City of Geneva somewhere between $6 and $10, if it remained a single pin, $6 to $10 for the city on an annual basis. And I don't see any greater urgency to chase those dollars at the present time. I guess, my thought is, is that I still feel that the fair way and the appropriate way for the city to dispose of this property is to secure appraisals. And I don't know why we have the resistance to secure an appraisal on a small parcel. We'd certainly do it on a larger parcel. So, I mean, Emma's landing and what that was assessed, I mean, what that was appraised, that was dramatically more, but, and we had appraisals there. And again, I know this is a different situation, and I understand that, but I still feel, though, that as a council, we have an obligation to both sides as it relates to this, and we have this fiduciary responsibility, I think, that we need to uphold and honor. So with that, I would be certainly agreeable to resolve this issue with a couple of appraisals, with the consideration that this parcel, when it's appraised, is considered as assembling it with one of those two adjacent neighbors. So with that, I would make a motion that we table pending the completion of two appraisals by the city.
We have a motion on the floor, ladies and gentlemen, and Mr. Kilburg, to table this matter. Tabling to a date certain required, Mr. City Attorney, or no?
I don't understand. The motion is to a date certain or to a date uncertain? To a date determined by city staff upon the completion of two appraisals, as outlined.
By the city.
By the city.
The city will absorb the cost of those two appraisals. We have a motion on the floor by Mr. Kilburg, so stated. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Burkhardt. The motion can be debated. We are in essence now asking the city to drop another $4,000 to figure out the assessment of a piece of property that is worth zzzit, if I may speak candidly. Ms. Ruby?
Thank you. I would like to see us clearly define a process. I know in the past, properties have been acquired at zero cost, and now we're looking at, you know, I'm trying to avoid this situation in the future. We're debating over the price, and if we had a defined process in place, I think it would just be much smoother, and it would eliminate all the guesswork. Is there anything we can do at this stage to define a process today that will apply to the situation as well as future situations that are similar to this, that deal with acquisition, land acquisition?
If I may go about process just...
Sure.
So there's a difference between selling what's called real property and a difference between vacating a street alley or right-of-way. This is vacation of a street alley or right-of-way. That process was that the council can either sell it for compensation or not for compensation, and we put out the notice and the public hearing and have a public hearing. If you're selling an actual parcel of land, real property, and I'll allow City Attorney or ask City Attorney to opine, there is a different process, and that's the process we've talked about, having an appraisal and doing 80% of the appraised value. That is all spelled out in state statute, so there are processes in place by state statute.
So can you please reiterate, what is the process by state statute for this situation?
Or a street, an alleyway, or any kind of a vacation. So that's city property that's used for a street, alleyway, right-of-way. The process is, one, you get a letter of interest, which is what happened here. Two, you have to have a public hearing noticed in the paper, which was done, and then you have a public hearing. The council can determine, the statute gives the discretion to the council to determine whether they want to vacate the property for compensation or not for compensation.
Okay. Is there any language about appraisals?
No.
In that? And historically, has the city ever acquired an appraisal in this situation with a vacation of property?
What I could find, there have been two recent vacations, and when I say recent, one was in 2005 and one was in 2011. Both vacations did not require an appraisal. Both vacations did not require any payment to the city. The only requirement was that the petitioner or the applicant for those vacation pay for the cost of preparing the documents. In one particular case, it all went to one property owner; in the other case, it went to the two adjacent property owners, and they decided amongst themselves who got where that line was drawn.
Okay.
And if, one was an alleyway over on Wilson Street, and the other one was Dryden Road. It was kind of a little spur that came off of maybe Meadows, I think it is. So those were the two that, when I was doing some research, that I was able to locate.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, this is still on the amendment, so Ms. Ruby still has the floor. Anything else?
No, I would just be curious, Dean, if you have any difference of opinion now after hearing that bit of history, if that affects your thinking on this?
I would...
I'll pause on that moment, since I will recognize who speaks next, but anything else?
Okay, no, that's it for me. Thank you.
Mr. Kozarog? Mr. Bruno wants to be recognized, as does Ms. Mayor, but they will be recognized after everyone else has had a chance to speak. So, Mr. Kozarog?
I just want to say that, this is getting to the point, for me, that it's frustrating. I mean, I had the first inclination that I think some of us here might be having, which is maybe we need to evaluate the value in a more professional way, but at this point, I mean, it's just, it's a tiny little sliver of property that was given us, I mean, we've been over this so many times. It's a sliver of property that we got for free. She's willing to pay for it. She's taken care of it for 20 years. When you talk about doing our taxpayers a service, I think the service is to dispose of this property, put it out of our coffers, and move on with our day. We've been wasting city staff time. Now you're proposing wasting taxpayer money on appraisals of the property, and all for what? I mean, it's going to come in, I don't even know how the appraisal would come in, but clearly, it's worth something to the applicant, and I just am dumbfounded that we would really be taking this to this level of, it's got to be our sixth meeting on this, including some of the closed sessions we had on this, and it's getting frustrating. So I definitely vote no on tabling this, so that we can resolve this matter tonight.
On the motion offered and seconded by Alderman Kilburg, is there anyone else who wishes to speak to that motion? Mr. Swanson, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. I disagree with Alderman Kozarog on that this is getting frustrating. It's frustrating to me because there are multiple slivers of property throughout Geneva that are valued at significantly more than $4,000. And I think we're doing a disservice to the taxpayers to unload it for $4,000 if there is a value. In this meeting tonight, we talked about how we're going to dispose of attachments to a 17-year-old machine. That's not going to generate $4,000, if anything. That shows the level of commitment we have to saving the taxpayer money or getting a value for the taxpayers. So just in looking at the, I looked at 28 vacant residential properties throughout Geneva, of which their average is over $2 per square foot, which would be a $12,000-plus valuation for this property.
Are those residentially zoned properties?
Yes, they're called vacant residential land.
Yeah, you're comparing apples and oranges. This is not a residential property. This is a non-buildable piece.
And most of these are, some are very small. Some are slivers.
What I don't want to see happen is comparing, I can't think of a better cliche, apples to oranges. You stated residential properties, which connotes to me buildable lots for R1 through R7.
And I don't think that's accurate. They're called vacant residential property. Many of them are, many of them are very small. Some are 2,000 or 4,000 square feet.
Are they buildable?
No, I don't believe they are.
Well, okay.
So, my point is, and...
Are they city-owned?
No, no, these are owned by residences.
Well, then, that's totally irrelevant, with all due respect. We're talking about city-owned property. We're not talking about proper property owned by residents.
I understand that. I'm trying to impute a value. That's a $1.26 per square foot. So in this property, we're giving it a value of 75 cents a square foot if at $4,000.
And if it was $5 a square foot, what's the benefit to the city? We get a few extra coins if we can say we saved the taxpayers money?
And it would be...
We spent far more than that deliberating this matter.
I completely agree. But going every year, the additional taxes would be a consideration. As Alderman Kilburg mentioned...
We spoke to the township assessor, who said, and I quote, "The value to the purchaser of this land, in terms of the aggregate value to whether or not this purchaser ever chooses to sell the land, is, quote, negligible, unquote." The majority of the districts who will benefit from the rise in property value, we all know, is the school district, the park district, we come in almost fourth.
Absolutely.
So six percent of whatever that value is, I think it's worth more just taking it off our liability.
Understand. So I see that it should be valued higher. I opposed this before. At 3,500, I appreciate increasing the amount to 4,000, but in my mind, that was not an adequate increase to change my...
We're still on the amendment.
But my question would be, do we need two appraisals at that cost, or could we just have one appraisal? That would be for Kilburg.
That'd be fine. I think one appraisal is better than no appraisals.
I would agree.
Would the council concur, because the council certainly knows, that the appraisal, air quotes, that we provided was based on the land cash ordinance? What I'm hearing, based on this amendment, is that the city should spend upwards of another 1,800 or $2,000 for one appraisal to determine what I believe to be the answer is, it really ain't worth that much, because you can't build on the darn thing. I see that as throwing good money after bad. I would... But... You still have the floor, Mr. Swanson.
I would amend Alderman Kilburg's amendment to ask for one appraisal, and then we would move forward with that one appraisal. There's no point in paying double the appraisal fee. I think that would provide some of us comfort with the value of what this property is and allow us to move forward.
That's a motion to amend?
Motion to amend. Change it to...
Not a friendly, but a motion to amend, seconded by Kilburg. I don't oppose the modification to my motion.
Mr. City Attorney, we are now going to discuss the amendment to the motion, to the amended motion. So the amendment to the amended motion is for one. Mr. Maladra.
It's like I lost somewhere in there. I wasn't sure we were debating the motion to table, or if we were debating the wisdom of conveying this property. As far as an appraisal is concerned, I... This one, I'm on defense about. I'm not on defense about whether or not we should vacate this property. I believe we should. I think Alderman Bruno said it mostly, that this property is of no utility to the city whatsoever. We paid nothing for it to try to gain value out of it through some accident of numerical juggling doesn't seem to me to be worth the amount of goodwill that we would lose by not vacating it. However, the motion to table, on the one hand, I think, what are we going to do? We have an appraisal. We can fly that from the flagpoles in Geneva, and it's still not going to make that property any more sellable than it already is. Whatever limitations, whatever constraints exist that make this property non-buildable are going to exist, whether we have a piece of paper saying it's worth a million dollars or if we have a piece of paper saying it's not worth dirt. On the other hand, if indeed the appraisal says it's not worth dirt, that could be useful to us, and it may be worth spending 1,800 or $4,000 to put that question to rest. But in the end, the appraisal by itself doesn't really change the value, the utility of the property to the city. What the people who are saying otherwise are implying or holding on to is that someday something might happen that grants this property a worth that is based on what? Based on the possible uses for the property? No. The twenty-eight properties you mentioned? I don't know. Any of those sell recently? Or are they still for sale? Or what's the context of twenty-eight parcels that have a value? So I think I'll vote against the table.
This is on the amended motion, ladies and gentlemen, so... This is Mr. Caleb, then Ms. Mayor, then... Excuse me, then Mr. Bruno, then Ms. Mayor.
Thank you. In order to do... In order to get an appraisal, or in order to do an appraisal, you need to have comparables to compare that, too. Now, if we've said there's twenty-five or twenty-eight other parcels or areas, that's fine, but if all of those are able to be built on, then those aren't comparables that can be used for this particular parcel, because we've already been told that it can't be built on. So I'm not really in favor of doing an appraisal, because I don't, you know, I think this has a different, unique set of circumstances. And also, those other parcels that are privately owned, I'm assuming anybody with the money can purchase them. Well, this parcel, there are three people that this can go to, and there's one interested party out of three of them. So if this fell into more of a scenario of the other ones that are listed, I would probably have a much different opinion than what I have, but this can only go to one of three people, and somebody has offered something for this that has taken care of the property for the last twenty-five years. And yes, I realize she was not required to take care of the property. She took that up on her own, but the fact is, is that she still did it. So I think that that should be taken into consideration. So no, I'm not really a fan of the appraisal, and I don't want to table this either. So I know we're on the amendment of the amendment, but there it is.
Mr. Bruno, sir, then Ms. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I will save one question until we're back on the main motion, but to the question of value, there is only value in something if there's a cohort of greater than one that has any interest in it. The only way this can have value at this point, because two of the three have already... Two of the three potential buyers that could be interested in this property have expressed no interest. We could sit on this and wait for the other neighbor to move, for the church to vacate, but the value of this property is what that cohort of bidders is willing to put toward it. When we're debating equipment on our plowing machine, there's a much bigger cohort of whatever attachments. You know, if John Deere sold 20,000 of these plows, there's a cohort of potentially 20,000 people that might want whatever attachments. This is nothing like that. It is only a liability. I'm prepared to vote. I would not support tabling this in any form.
Ms. Mayor?
Um...
Ms. Mayor?
It's... It won't surprise anybody that I think we should vote for this tonight, but I also fear that if we don't table it per the people that are currently in opposition, that our applicant will have to start all over again, which is, I think, unfair and not what we want to do to a person who has come here in good faith, that she'd be treated fairly, and has already spent quite a bit in legal fees. I'd like to suggest a modification, based on advice from the people who have openly opposed this vacation, to say an agreement of what percentage of the appraised value would you accept if you get that appraisal, so that we can lock this in and we don't have to come back here and debate this issue again. And how can we bring this to closure? What is going to change your mind? Because we're currently sitting at seven out of ten at best, and I'm just not going to do that to this applicant, so...
But on the amended motion, still, this is on the...
This is the amended motion of the table.
Correct. This is the amended motion of the tabling, which was to require only one appraisal.
Well, on that matter, I think that, in any case, when we appraise as the city, we should offer the applicant a challenge appraisal if it comes back in what they think is unreasonable. So I would say that we could amend the amendment of the...
On the amended motion to amend, still, let me just throw this out, excuse me, folks, for the benefit of everyone, and I have been castigated for saying this, but I will say it again with great passion. This council voted unanimously, unanimously, to, quote, "Give at no cost a commercial piece of property to advance a new business in town." It was the right decision to make. Yes, that business was in a tiff, is in a tiff, but it was the right decision to make, substantially larger than this sliver of land, with very little debate, very little discussion. Not one person said in public session or in private session, "Well, you know, it's not to the best interest of the taxpayers. We should really have several appraisals." I don't know. No. We said, in order to advance a goal, give the property to that commercial interest. I say the equation is identical to tonight. We have an interested buyer. The land serves no utility whatsoever, to borrow words from Mr. Maladra. So with that said, again, this is still on the amended motion, so... Mr. Bruno? And no appraisal was done on that property, folks? None? Microphone, Mr. Bruno?
Thank you. Sorry, thank you, Mayor. I will bring up my last question, because it might bear on however many amendments we have going here, too. Clarity on the vote. This is eight people less...
The motion to amend is a simple majority.
Right, right.
The amended motion is a simple majority, but the...
Okay, so I can't discuss the voting requirement on the main motion?
Correct. Technically, no.
Okay.
Yeah. Just to repeat, folks, the land we invested into the commercial development, substantially larger, which we held for decades, was granted to the commercial owner, a wise move, in my opinion, too. No appraisal was required, and we gave it with great glory and gusto. And here we are, an opportunity to do the right thing again, and somehow... Mayor? Yes, Mr. Swanson?
You accused me of mixing apples and oranges. I think you're doing the same thing. I think it's very different to develop a commercially viable, sales-tax-generating business as opposed to adding a residential property that you yourself said is going to provide zero or negligible property tax. So I think, with all due respect, I think you're mixing apples and oranges, too.
I will... I accept that criticism. Perhaps I mix the apples and oranges to perhaps convey that the juice we're trying to make here tonight should be palpable, and we shouldn't be fooling ourselves into thinking we're making this more convoluted than we should be, so... On the amendment to amend, Ms. Berghardt?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll justify why I'm voting in favor of appraisal. I just feel like I'm shooting in the dark. I don't even know what number I'm looking for. You know, a $500 increase is... Well, I will say, I live on a narrow city lot. My neighbors to the south have a lot and a half. Their lot is worth more than my lot. Is that value? Or if it was to be appraised, I mean, they could do a fire pit on the side. They could do a swimming pool. They could do... They just have a much bigger lot, and so that's where I'm struggling with. This is not buildable, but it does increase the value of her property, which there's a lot of things that could be done with this part. So that's where I would like to... An appraisal, however, if the appraisal fails, I'm ready to vote in favor of the $4,000, so...
Mr. DeGroot? It's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, but a pool or anything else cannot be put in that lot because of the easements required to access.
There is some area that there could be accessory structures, like a pool or shed or something like that, but not within the easements.
Not within the easements. So in essence, the buildable land is even smaller than...
Right.
The naked, I would say.
Reflected on the plot of vacation and the packets, and show the easements.
On the amendment to amend?
A gazebo, a picnic pavilion, whatever. There is value to land, especially in someplace like Geneva. That's why I'm looking for the appraisal. But I do agree that this has gone on too long, and I'm struggling, too. So, thanks.
Mr. Kozarog?
Just to respond to Alderman Berghardt, yes, there's value to the applicant. That's why she's asking.
One minute, Mr. Kozarog. People haven't had a chance to speak. They simply need to raise their hands. If they raise their hand, they're recognized, they're happy to do so. I, you know, while people might think I'm a chameleon, I can't see it out of both sides of my god-darn head, so I'm trying my best. Mr. Kozarog?
I was just going to say, there absolutely is value to the applicant. That's why she's asking for it. So to say, well, yeah, there's value there. She could build a swimming pool. She could put a shed up or whatever. Yes, of course she can. That's why she wants it. The question is, there value to the city? We're selling it. There is no value to this property as it sits right now. It's only liability. It's only lawn cutting. It's only somebody falling and breaking an ankle on it. It's only trouble. There is no upside to this for the city. So you can look at the value... I think we're confusing looking at the value ahead of time for what it would be for the applicant when she completes the process. Yes, of course, a bigger lot's more valuable. I don't think there's any question about that. So... But that's not what an appraiser is going to look at. An appraiser's looking at the value of the property as it exists, right now. It's not buildable. It has no utility to anybody but the person that wants to buy it. And further, I appreciate Alderman Bruno, and I'm sure you're right, but I feel like an appraisal's only what somebody's willing to pay for it, not even maybe a cohort of people. We have one person who's interested to pay for it, and she's made an offer. I don't know what an appraiser is going to tell us beyond that. You know, you could say it's worth 25 or $50,000, but it's... That doesn't mean anything if nobody's going to pay for it. So I don't know. That's my two cents on this over-analysis of the value, looking into the future, what it might be for the applicant. And again, you can tell my frustration in the conversation. Thank you.
Mr. Kilburg, sir, on the amended motion to amend.
Are we speaking to the amendments?
We're speaking to the amended, amended motion, which is to require only one appraisal.
I'm agreeable with reducing the initial amendment from two to one appraisal, and since others have taken liberty to speak on the issue in a broader manner, I think that if you look at Heartland as a development, and if you look at the potential of increasing the size of this property to the largest lot in Heartland, I would think that it's going to command a lot more value, especially in today's real estate market. And it's somewhat principled. The thing is, is that we've sat on this piece for nineteen years. I just... It just seems as though there's some great urgency at the present time, for some reason, that we want to dispose of this parcel. And if it hasn't been a problem to the city for the last nineteen years, I don't see why holding on to it and seeing what its potential might be with the current owners or potentially future homeowners adjacent to the property might be. One thing I've learned is that property never, over the long term, decreases in value. Property always increases in value. That's an absolute. And I just feel that this is, you know, it's become somewhat more of a principle in the fact that I think that in appraisal, I don't think that staff or legal told us tonight that an appraisal... that an appraisal would be inappropriate or the council could not request an appraisal of this type of parcel. I think they said that it may not be required, but they didn't say that it couldn't be required if it's the will of the council. So I'm just saying, as a council, we can exercise that. That's our prerogative. And there's nothing about a request for an appraisal that's out of order.
Agreed.
That wasn't really stated, though.
No, there's nothing out of order to request an appraisal. I would argue that it's unnecessary. Nothing out of order, just unnecessary. Anyone else who has not yet spoken? Mr. Maladra, your hand up, sir. This is on the amended, amended motion.
Sorta, as...
We allow some liberty here because...
As tentatively as everybody else has been. There may be value to the applicant, and I think that's the point. There's no value to us. There's no value to somebody who doesn't own either of the houses next door to this property. Nobody's gonna come up and say, "I'll give you $50,000 for this piece of land that I can't do anything with, just to call it mine." As far as principle goes, we paid nothing for this for the purpose of creating a street. We're not creating a street. And because she might profit by acquiring the property she's taken care of for 20 years, we think we should get a piece of that profit? That doesn't paint us in a very flattering light. Principle is to say, "We don't need this. We paid nothing for this. You've cared for it for 20 years because you live next door to it, and you didn't want to live next to a potential eyesore or whatever. You took care of it because, in fact, you're one of the only three people affected by what this thing becomes." Principle to me says she has more use of it than we do. Why we're holding on to it tightly to get an extra dime or an extra buck 26 per square foot, I don't really understand. So principle to me is that what's good for our taxpayers is the knowledge that they'll be treated fairly in similar circumstances. Thanks. I don't know what that's gotta do with tabling the motion. I apologize.
Well, the amended motion on the floor is to require only one appraisal. That's the amended motion, the amended, amended motion. So anyone else wish to speak to that topic? Yes, sir.
Yeah, point of order. So you can, any of us here can vote for the Second Amendment, for one, but still vote against the original amendment for any...
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. Right, but if it... Sort of tabling goes through.
Okay, so right now, this vote is just if there's gonna be one appraisal or not, and then we have the next amendment, which is gonna be for two.
Table and for one appraisal. Pending one appraisal.
Okay, so it's the table and...
Right.
This is the amended...
We gotta hold it in abeyance to get the appraisal. So it would be tabled pending an appraisal.
Can, point of order?
Yeah.
Can I, will there be an opportunity to table it for a different reason after this vote?
Depending on the outcome of the vote.
Thank you.
Mr. Kaven?
I'd like to call the vote.
The motion, the amended motion on the table. Are we all clear? A vote in the affirmative, this is support the amended motion, which is to table this matter and require one appraisal.
Do we need to vote on calling the question?
He called it, so yeah, technically, unless you were gonna vote anyway. You should...
Is there a second to call the question?
Second.
Seconded by Kosarog. On the motion to call the question, I have a feeling I know what it is. Whenever you're ready, Ms. Brunhead.
Bruno?
This is just a call.
Correct.
Aye.
Berghardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kaven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kosarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Motion passes, folks, on the amended motion. Let's have a roll call vote. Ms. Fornari, whenever you're ready, please. A simple majority carries the day. Those voting aye supports the motion or the amended motion. Those voting nay, do not.
Bruno?
Aye.
Berghardt?
Point of order. Could you explain exactly what we're voting on?
We're voting on Alderman Kilburg's amended motion to table the matter so that we have time to allow for or to have one appraisal completed at the expense of the City of Geneva.
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kaven?
Nay.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kosarog?
Nay.
Maladra?
Nay.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Nay.
Swanson?
Aye.
The amended motion has been approved, six to four.
Oh, no.
Correct.
We're not, not that one. Sorry.
That satisfies the entire proceeding this evening. There's a motion to reconsider, or, excuse me, a request to reconsider?
Sorry, yeah, my apologies. My question was, is to whether...
The winning side, so we can still do it.
No, his question was...
So my question was, will there still be two amendments to vote on?
That wasn't your question. Respectful.
Then maybe I asked it differently, then. Okay.
That wasn't your question. But this motion issued the need for the second one to pass. If it didn't, you could vote otherwise. But this concluded the matter, which is, and you're on the winning side, so you can get a motion, you can...
Do...
You're offering that.
May I, if I, may I, so I can just reconsider my vote to nay?
I have to ask for a motion to reconsider. Oh, okay, oh, okay. Motion to reconsider would be in order. Motion requires a second.
Move to reconsider.
Second.
Seconded by Kosarog, a simple majority vote allows the motion to be reconsidered?
It is.
Okay.
Order. Doesn't the second have to come from somebody also on the winning side?
No, it does not. Just on the motion itself.
Okay.
The motion to reconsider offered by Bruno, seconded by Kosarog. On the motion to reconsider, a simple majority vote carries the day. Ms. Fornari, Ms. Kelly, are you ready for this?
Point of order, can you explain again what we're voting on now?
Yes, we are voting on a motion to reconsider the vote. So if a majority of the council, six say aye, that means the vote is considered again. We get to start from scratch and vote again, which allows for someone theoretically to change their vote. It has to be done the same meeting, and it has to be done by someone on the prevailing side of the previous vote taken.
So right now, we're just voting on whether we're gonna allow a do-over, basically?
Correct, exactly.
Thank you.
That's exactly right.
A do-over, exactly. Yes?
I don't know if this is allowed, but I'm just gonna make a comment. I feel that Alderman Bruno's vote was obviously, from hearing him speak, his vote did not match everything he said tonight. So I feel that he should be given the opportunity to redo.
Ms. Fornari, whenever you're ready, please take the roll call vote.
Request to reconsider. Bruno?
Nay.
No. No.
Oh, wait, this is just... Oh, yes, 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 aye, aye.
Bruno, aye. Berghardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kaven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kosarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
The motion to reconsider the vote has been adopted, or passed, excuse me, unanimously. We now, as I understand it, Mr. City Attorney, return to the original motion to vote on this matter, which is the amended motion offered by Kilburg?
Amended by Alderman Swanson on the one, it's the re-vote on the very vote you just took minutes ago.
Exactly.
It's to table pending one appraisal.
One appraisal, exactly.
You good?
We're good.
We're good.
I'm up to speed.
All right. Bruno?
Nay.
Berghardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kaven?
Nay.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kosarog?
Nay.
Maladra?
Nay.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Nay.
Swanson?
Aye.
Aye.
Five, five, I broadly vote nay. Man, I need a new pass.
Unamended. Unamended. You wanna still vote on that, or can you still debate and discuss?
Yes.
Read the roll.
Does everyone understand what we're gonna vote on now?
No.
Mr. City Attorney?
The original, the original motion.
I'm sorry, it's Alderman Kilburg's original motion to amend, which was to table pending two appraisals.
Wasn't that a friendly amendment, though? I thought he under, he accepted it.
It was offered by Swanson. He acknowledged it.
Doesn't, isn't that the...
No, it's stated as a friendly amendment.
He's asked for his vote, so it's a...
I'll withdraw it.
Okay.
I thought it was...
But it wasn't a friendly amendment. A friendly amendment is stated, "I'd like to offer a friendly amendment. No one objects. Life is good." Mr. Swanson offered the amendment. Mr. Kilburg said, "Yes, I agree."
So in the future, you'd have to say, "I offer a friendly amendment."
Usually, it's immaterial, but, yeah. Now, we are voting on the acquisition of St. Charles. So, what was it? Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Back to the original motion.
The original motion, ladies and gentlemen, is to require two appraisals and to table this matter until those... No, clarify.
Just withdrew it.
The original motion is to approve the request to the purchase of property as stated previously. Ms. Mayor, then Mr. Bruno. We're back to the original motion, which is to consider Ms. Maron's
Offer.
Offer to purchase the property and the city to vacate that property based on the information we have.
No more tabling.
Correct. No more tabling discussion.
Sorry about the microphone. I can't say much more than what I've already said, except that I did go over the entire tax map of Geneva. There are no other stubs of roads within the municipal boundary that would be vacated in a similar fashion to this. So this, the idea that we're setting some precedent here is not valid. There may be other pieces of property around town, but, and they may not be owned by the City of Geneva, but as far as a vacation of a developer donated right away that has water service on it, has utilities running through it, is essentially useless to build any kind of structure that would contribute significantly to the value of a property, is just, it's not a correct assumption or issue. I can't express to you, you know, we're talking about our frustration. The frustration that Ms. Maron has expressed to me on this matter is, you know, significant. She's trying to do the right thing here. She's trying to clear the title issues that exist on these properties because it is a strange situation. And she's maintained the property for a long time now in good faith, and her neighbors recognize that. And I think we're having a hypothetical discussion about value and costs that is immaterial to what's in front of us, which is one of our, my constituent, Gabe's constituent, and a citizen in Geneva that is just trying to finish this transaction so she can go about her life, which she's a busy person. And developers have to leave these little nubs for future, but they never, it never was Geneva's property before it was dedicated as the easement for this future road that is never going to happen. So I just really think, everything that I've heard from the side that's in opposition to this is, I just don't agree with you. And I hope that you could be swayed to vote in favor of this, to dispose of the matter and stop Ann Maron from having to pay her lawyer to come to these kind of meetings. That's all I've got.
Excuse me, on the main motion, ladies and gentlemen. Anyone else? Mr. Bruno, sir?
And this is back to that question, a point of order. So the, this requires a supermajority of eight council members. Typically, and this is strictly council members? Usually, this is make or break with the mayor. The mayor does not vote on this ever and under any circumstance?
Not on a vacate. So I will apologize for the prior vote. The fact is, under 65 ILCS 5/11-91-1, vacating street, alley, or city property, it's a supermajority vote of the alderman. Right away, excuse me, because this is a city right away. There are literally dozens of other votes to be taken on other parcels, but in this instance, it's the council and the council only.
Interesting. Thank you.
Ms. Berger?
Related, so, and I really appreciate years ago when we added this section that tells us. But I mean, it says, "The mayor may vote on three occasions, blah, 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 and then when a vote greater than a majority of the corporate authorities is required by state statute or local ordinance to adopt an ordinance resolution or motion." But it's not a vacation, so it's not a ordinance resolution or motion.
Correct. So Alderman Berghardt, the key term there is "of the corporate authorities," which would be inclusive of the mayor, except the state statute I just cited talks about trustees or alderpersons only and not the corporate authorities.
So this is like about the highest bar you can get?
Pretty much.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anyone else on the main motion?
I think that language is superfluous because it's just identifying when the mayor can vote. It's just not in this instance.
If I were to vote, ladies and gentlemen, I'd be voting aye, just so everyone's clear. And I do think it's important to note, and this is not meant to to call into question anyone's...
I'd like to make a motion, if I can. Can I make a motion?
Yes.
Like to motion to table pending further consideration by the applicant.
There's a motion by Ms. Mayor to table this matter to a specific date or just until...
Until...
I would recommend a date certain if you want to bring it back. If it's a date uncertain, that would basically be tabling it to its death.
Okay, so not the next meeting, but the following meeting?
That would be June. Yeah.
Can I ask the applicant to speak to that?
Your call. You can.
You can?
Ms. Maron, would you like to engage in discussion about when you would like to return to address this issue?
Ms. Maron, if I may trouble you to come to the podium, or Mr. Philip Chuck, one of the two.
It's obvious there's three noes. Last time, I'm sorry, in January, there were seven yeses. And because Alderman Bruno was missing and would have been in agreement, I just, you can say it's worth a million dollars. I'm not gonna pay a million dollars for it, so you get nothing. So I just, I don't, it's one, two, three. I know who says no, so I don't even see the point of this. I, you guys, it's really a shame. I think everyone's throwing out, Nate, years. I have bought my lot in '93. I have lived there since '94. It's 28 years. I have been a good citizen. You know the city? I'm gonna tell you right now, wherever that pumping station is that you have, I have photographs that they've never shoveled the snow for the children that go to Heartland School, okay? And that little pumping station looks like complete crap with weeds, dandelions. It's disgusting. It's a shame. It's an eyesore. So you talk about property values? Property values will go down when I have weeds going down there. So my neighbors at either side and across the street and our whole development, we have had eyesore neighbors, and it's a shame. We come together as a community and have helped. So it's, that's what people do, that's what neighbors do. But I'm telling you, if, I don't want to live like that. But I'm telling you, if, I, I don't want to live like that, but I, I only, I don't know that there's, it was clear that my other neighbor wanted the property at a cost of zero because that was, was done in two thousand and five. So when everyone says this has been waiting for years, not true. Ann Maron has gone to the city at least a dozen times, but you, I was always told that because it was an adjacent property, my neighbor had to as well want, and we had to go together to pay for the, whatever the administrative fees were. They have absolutely no desire and interest, and you guys who are all here in January, he said it clearly, "I, I don't want to pay a penny. If you want to give me half, I'll do it." And I, and that's what I said to him. I said, "Dave, split with me the lawyer's cost." It wasn't until I had a New Year's resolution to say, "Something's gotta happen with that land." I've been saying it for years and years and years. I, I definitely didn't have this notion come out of nowhere, and when you talk about property value, give me a break, have you heard about two thousand and eight and, and the housing market, okay? So prop, I mean, that does not always stay up. So yes, I'm upset and I'm emotional, and I know that's not right, but what I'm saying is, is good points were made, is, I have lived there, I have raised my children, the kids, it's just, it's just silly that it's, and it is a liability. I mean, like I said, I'm not asking for anyone to pat me on the back because I shovel my walk, but the city doesn't shovel their walk by the pumping station. So you talk about a liability there, kids are gonna fall, I walk my dog, and it's not mo, or it's not shoveled, and it's, and it's garbage. So now, like I said, I take pride when I come to my house and, 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 and have that. So, so you're gonna spend two thousand dollars to have another appraisal or whatever it is, I'm, I'm telling you, I, there's no value to it. If you can, you know, whatever price you, you think is, yes, and so if I were to add a gazebo or a swimming pool, that would increase my, the county assessor said to me, "If you do an improvement, improvement, that will raise my taxes." So that'll be more city, if I were to do that, I have absolutely no plans. So, I mean, but if I, if I did, then the city's gonna get more money out of it. So do I want this tabled? No, but I know that, it's, I, I can add. So, so quite, quite frankly, I don't know what more to do. I, I mean, I, next month? I don't know. Is this gonna be a waste because I'm exhausted? And it's beyond that number of meetings that you guys have had. I am not kidding you, I have the actual dried-in thing. I've given it to my, you guys provided that to me in two thousand and, and five. I saw that that was given, I gave that to my neighbor and said, "There was, there was vacation of land that was given to both neighbors, we just have to pay for the legal costs or the plat of survey." I don't want, they, he did not want to then, and he still does not want to as of January of this year, pay for any cost. That's when I said, "Well, then I will," you know, and, and that's it. And even then, I said, "If he, if he agreed to split the cost with me, I don't know what more to do." This is beyond reasonable. I, I am very disappointed, I mean, not just, I, I don't know. I mean, I, I'm sitting here saying, "If I don't take care of it, my home value and my neighborhood's value is going to go down." Nobody wants that ugly, weedy plot of land. So I don't know what can change, the three of you, then go, I don't, I don't even know, I can't keep it, keep it straight, did you guys vote to do another, you know, an appraisal? I, I don't, go ahead, do it. I think it's a laugh that you're gonna spend, I don't know how much money, I mean, probably two to three thousand dollars, I, I mean, to, to get an appraisal, and it doesn't mean I'm gonna, you know, that's gonna, not gonna matter to me. It's not gonna allow me to provide more money. It is something that should be done because I have lived in this community, it, it just happened to be where my property adjoined up to. So, I, I mean, I know I don't have the votes, so why, so are we gonna just drag it out or just rip off the Band-Aid? I don't know, I'm just...
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Mayor, you still have the floor on this since you asked to be, Ms. Maron recognized, is there anything else you wanna add?
I don't know if it's to a date certain.
There's a motion lingering on the floor that it can be with... That's correct.
Do it, do it next month, but I don't know if anything's gonna change.
It can be drawn or it can be seconded, that's correct, so everyone's a... Your, the floor is still yours, so you offered a motion to table this matter, you can withdraw that motion, or you can ask me to ask for a second of that motion.
Let's table it till June, see if, I don't know what, what is gonna change, anybody?
The first meeting in June is June sixth. The second meeting would be the twentieth. Close pause.
Let's, uh, can we take a break? Can I ask for a break?
You can request a motion to recess for a moment or two.
I'd like to request a motion to recess for ten minutes.
Ten-minute request for a recess, is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Kosarog. A voice vote to recess for ten minutes, be back in twenty. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Unanimous vote to recess for ten minutes, the microphones are off. Ladies and gentlemen, ten minutes has expired, we kindly request that the council members return to their seats for continued deliberation. Yep. And Ms. Mayor, you have the floor still.
So first of all, I'm gonna withdraw my motion, my request to table, withdrawing that, it wasn't seconded.
The motion is withdrawn?
And I'd like to make a new motion to amend the value, on behalf of the applicant, I want to amend the value offered to six thousand dollars.
I'll second that.
Mr. Kaven seconds that. Therefore, the motion I trust is to request acceptance of the six thousand dollar offer for the property in question, and the city would then vacate that land accordingly. On that matter, comments, questions? Eight members of the city council need to vote in the affirmative in order to enact this... Oh, the motion to amend, excuse me. So a simple majority, simple majority, motion to amend. Ms. Fenario, whenever you're ready.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kaven?
Aye.
Kilburg? Kosarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
The motion to amend has been adopted by ten votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative. That does become the main motion. The main motion is on the floor, ladies and gentlemen. Anyone wish to speak to the main motion, which is to purchase the subject property at six thousand dollars and the city of Geneva to vacate that property to the ownership of Ms. Ann Maron? Or call the question? Is there a second to call the question? Seconded by Mayor. Roll call vote whenever you're ready, Ms. Fenari.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kaven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kosarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Questions been called, ladies and gentlemen, we're all familiar with the main motion. Without further delay, Ms. Fenari, please take the roll.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kaven?
Aye.
Kilburg? Kosarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Motion has been approved with ten affirmative votes, zero nay votes. This item has been adopted by the city council. Item number twelve F, ladies and gentlemen. Consider approval of ordinance number twenty-two-two dash twenty-three rescinding the historic landmark designation for a portion of the property at four East State Street pursuant to section ten dash six dash six, parentheses fourteen, and section ten dash six dash six, parentheses fifteen of the Geneva City Code. Is there a motion to put this matter on the floor? So moved. I believe that was Mr. Bruno. Seconded by Mr. Kosarog. Ms. Dawkins.
Okay. On March twentieth, twenty eighteen, the HPC recommended designation of four East State Street as a historic landmark in the city of Geneva, and the city council affirmed the property met the standards for designation as a historic landmark, and so designated it on May seventh, twenty eighteen, through ordinance twenty-eighteen oh nine. Following a pre-application meeting earlier this year, David A. Patzelt, representative for the Shodin Family Foundation, submitted an application requesting to rescind historic landmark designation for a portion of the four East State Street property, effectively a boundary amendment. Notices of filing were mailed and published per the ordinance. On April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, a public hearing was held before the Historic Preservation Commission, at which time the applicant and public were given an opportunity to provide testimony for or against the request. A staff evaluation was provided to the commission recommending modifications of the applicant's proposed boundary amendment. Staff evaluation was based on the historic evolution of the property. Despite some concerns, the applicant agreed to accept the recommended boundary modifications, reducing the designated property to approximately one-eighth of the original area designated in twenty eighteen. The HPC unanimously recommended approval of the applicant's request to rescind the historic landmark designation for those portions of four East State Street property subject to and consistent with staff's recommendations. Four-year consideration this evening is whether the rescinding of the historic landmark designation for portions of four East State Street property, a boundary amendment as recommended by the HPC, omits or excludes historically significant portions of the property as previously designated. The request for the boundary amendment for the historic landmark property is a determination separate and apart from condition assessment, economic feasibility, or future uses, which would be considered under a separate review when any work proposed affecting the designated property is submitted. We do have this evening with us, Mr. Patzelt, and then we also have preservation planner Lambert to answer any additional questions that the council may have. And I do believe Mr. Patzelt did want to give a brief presentation.
Certainly. Mr. Patzelt, good evening.
Good evening. I might need a hand, let's see if I can get this started here.
I think we have a new operating system after that last debate, that's pretty much expired now, I think we have. Help is on the way.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Great.
Oh, you got it, Omar.
Thank you. Hopefully I won't take as long as that, that last item, but I wanted to, uh, raise a couple of comments relative to why we had objected to the setback that was not consistent with our application. And then there was, in my opinion, the newspapers were not clear exactly as to what happened at the HPC. So I'd like to first state that we're not, our application was to rescind the landmark designation for, in essence, one foot outside the building, the building footprint. So in essence, keeping the building, the remnant stone structure landmarked. As part of that discussion, staff has asked, and this is their slide here on the presentation with, in the red marks, the green lines are, were the original Shodin lines, and now in blue, I've added some other comments since, since staff's red lines. The first one is the setback on the east side. Staff had, again, recommended twenty-one feet be the setback. On the south side, they had recommended twenty feet. And on the west side, they in essence had said to take it to the edge of the property line. That edge of the property line happens to fall at forty-one feet. Couple other topics relative to that distance, the east boundary was based on some, I believe, that there was some interpretation of a structure that was previously added to the remnant stone structure. And then to the southeast corner, the area shaded in blue, there was actually no structure at all ever built at that location, so I'm questioning why that setback was even being granted, or why that landmark would need to remain if there was no structure there at all. And then the area to the west, where the forty-one feet taking into the property line, we know that on the west side of the structure, and you see a photograph of the west side of the structure here, there certainly is not any remnant, remnant structures there. The area to the east, where the twenty-one feet was requested when Shodin began the demolition of the building, and we had worked with staff to, in essence, peel the, peel the onion back so that we could find the remnant structure. We did do excavation along the east side to see if there was any foundations below the grade or below the former restaurant, and we were not able to find any. So, again, questioning why we should be going to twenty-one feet if there is no foundation or remnant structure there. The question about setbacks, it, we did a little looking into the history of setbacks in historic structures with, throughout, throughout Geneva. Here you see a photograph of the Dodson House, had significant setbacks in the historical photos, yet today, we know that the Dodson House has successfully been redeveloped and has abutting structures immediately to the north and south side of that structure. The Harrington Inn, also in the historic district, historic structure, historical photograph in the upper left, no abutting structures and no significant setbacks currently in place, and structures, new structures abutting it. The Pure Oil Building here, historical photo up in the upper left-hand corner shows that there was setback to the, to the west, but yet today, there is little to, maybe it's a foot of a setback. In addition, the new building to the west of the Pure Oil Building is blocking the view for the Pure Oil Building as you approach from the west. Dodson, building the Chicken, Atlas Chicken, historical photo, aerial photograph in the upper left, does not, there's no existing structures immediately north of the Atlas Chicken, but yet, when we built the Dodson Place, in, is actually technically Dodson Place Building Number Two, it was built within one foot of the historic Atlas Chicken location. So I would ask if there could be any consideration by the city council to stay consistent with our application, and that would be to approve our application with the one foot outside the remnant stone structure in comparison to the dimensions that staff had recommended and that HPC had recommended, those being twenty-one feet to the east, twenty feet to the south, and to the property line to the west, or in essence, forty-one feet. I'm available for any questions if you have any.
The floor is open for questions from the dais. Ms. Mayor, the floor is yours.
I was under the impression that it's not a setback that we're imposing, but a designation line for the historic landmark. So we're not, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're not setting a parameter by which you can't attach to the building or improve around the building, but that we're saying the historic structure needs this space to be considered in the application for any building that would be done on the site.
I would, I would agree with that. I, in all of the public testimony when this property was initially heard and when it was designated, I still to this day believe that was, there was an error, and that error was when the applicant applied for the historical designation, did not have a legal description of the stone structure, so in essence grabbed what was available, which was a survey that the city staff had in their file, declaring the entire property, all the way around, the entire, call it acre and a half. However, all of the testimony that, if you look at those transcripts, really talked about what is the historic element or item that they're trying to declare, and that, in my opinion, everybody kept talking about the stone structure, the remnant stone structure. Since that time when we started, when I was working with staff, staff has been referring to, "Well, there's, other items have occurred outside that stone structure that perhaps we need to consider." One being on the west side, the mill race, not the building being called the mill race, but the actual waterway. I question staff, why are we now... actual waterway. I question staff, why are we now going to declare the landmark designation for a mill race that doesn't exist there any longer? And if we are going to declare on the Shodin property, the 41 feet, why aren't we not declaring part of the Park District property because there is a mill race there? When we look to the east, the arguments of staff have been that there was a pre-existing structure there, and so we think that needs to be landmarked. Yes, you're right. I was referring to the lines as setback, but I'm inappropriately using that term setback. I believe that the landmark designation should be consistent with what everybody's been attempting to landmark, and that is the remnant stone structure. It was tempting to show you this evening that really what we've talked about, other historical structures have been the actual structures themselves throughout Geneva, and there hasn't been this vision of giving setback. If you stay consistent with the staff's recommendation of the 21 and the 20 and the 40 feet, anything done within that setback, although it may not be changing the remnant stone structure, if it's within that distance, it would have to go in front of the HPC commission for their purview. And that's simply what we were trying to say is, okay, if we're going to do something attached to the stone structure or do something to the stone structure, then it would go to HPC. So that's what I was trying, or attempting to illustrate for you.
I think I still lack the required clarity on the staff recommendation for the designated area and not for, I don't think it has to do with setbacks of building, I think like if you put a stairway in front of the old blacksmith shop, that that would have to go in front of historic, the council.
Commission.
The commission, sorry. And that makes sense to me, and it makes sense to me that the boundary to the east would be governed by how it intersects with the old building, not that we're looking for old foundations or any new landmark underneath the ground, but that we're protecting the surrounding area with a review by the commission. Am I wrong about this, or maybe Michael could?
Mr. Lambert? Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I think you've hit on the point exactly. This is not a setback. This is trying to take in what the historic context, what the historic record identifies this property as having significance. So while there have been several examples of other buildings that have buildings up close to them, those buildings sit on a piece of property, and each of those properties that were identified sit on a piece of property that's included in the nomination for that particular property as well. This is not a restriction of development. It's just that if development occurs within the area that has historic significance by what the commission came to a conclusion on, then that area would be reviewed by the commission, just like any of those other buildings that were just shown that have development up near them. So does that help clarify what you're asking?
That does, thank you. So are we voting to amend any of the boundaries here, or right now, we're just straightforward voting to?
We are considering the HPC's recommendation as it appears. However, if anyone from the dais wishes to offer an amendment, they certainly can.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Bruno, then Mr. Kosarog.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, going way back, the original green boundary, I think everyone, I know certainly myself recognized that is just really an error in haste with the parcel number. That's the plat. There was no historic structure remaining on that property. I always assumed, I think, I think most people realize that those boundaries could and should be drawn back in. The boundaries, as shown here, the red boundaries, again, don't restrict development necessarily, but there is oversight. If new construction were to encroach on that, the case would have to be made that this great project, make or break, needs an extra X number of feet abutting that property. And even with this boundary here, it seems like we've, it just minimally connects to the right-of-way to give this, to give that building some type of potentially useful public access. I don't think it'll ever have vehicular access, but by, it seems to me, drawing that 21-foot dimension back would really strain how this might in the future connect with the public right-of-way. And on top of that, this boundary still doesn't mean this building won't be demolished. If there's no, if we're comfortable that we just simply cannot get this adaptively reused, and that's a whole nother discussion as to how we make ourselves comfortable that it just can't happen, but if that were to happen, I think we'd have to accept the demolition. But I think this right here, those spaces around it with sightlines, because part of the history is, is the way that building has interacted with its surroundings through the generations. So we keep nice sightlines from Island Park, from the Riverside. I think this is a reasonable boundary to draw this back to. It can be changed in the future. It is not intrinsically restrictive, I don't believe. To the point of Park District land, yeah, actually, that's, I could see expanding the boundary into the Park District, but that's already in the public realm. So it probably unduly complicates things. So I'm happy with this, and I think it still gives the building a fighting chance if somehow we can become comfortable that we've given the building a fighting chance. Thanks.
Mr. Kosarog, sir?
My question was for Mr. Patzelt. So I watched the HPC meeting today, actually, and I guess I was a little confused with your introduction here because you seemed very okay with the proposal at the HPC meeting. I thought you agreed, you know, you had some minor objections to the way staff had made the recommendations, but in essence, you were in agreement for the designation that they ultimately unanimously approved.
I believe what I had stated was that I politely disagree with the staff report, but were willing to accept them to try to move it forward.
Okay.
Seeing that had gone through the pre-application meeting, had gone through the two different volleys back and forth of the application response comments, response comments from Shodin back to the city, we were just not going to get anywhere. And not that I have any personal objection against Michael, we had to politely agree to disagree. And believe that in order to keep this moving forward to get somewhere, that I had to politely disagree, but accept his recommendation. Certainly with this being a historic structure, having 28 years, working with Historic Preservation, I can tell you that there's no way that Historic Preservation that I have seen in 28 years has ever gone against staff and has agreed with a developer. So that was a losing proposition if I came in to try to pound my fist on the dais or the podium here. Nobody's ever going to accept it. So that's what I was attempting to do at the HPC, and I thought that I had made that clear.
I think you did too. And so I just was confused now, though you started in your introduction tonight, saying, in essence, would we consider modifying those recommendations even further?
Yeah.
So you're okay with it?
As I see it, you have a recommendation from, you have an application that was asking for one foot. The intent of the one foot was, okay, if I'm going to attach to that structure or be immediately adjacent to it, I have to go to HPC. I have no problem with that. If I'm outside the one foot, and I don't want to do anything on that land, now if it's within that 21 feet, 20 feet, or 41 feet, I have to take that to HPC. Starts to get a little, even a little bit foggier when I hear an alderman talk about public use. Nowhere in our application or previously have we talked about that building being public use. So now I'm a little concerned that HPC is being used as the vehicle to have public use or demand public use to a historic structure. Perhaps that's where I'm starting to get this word about setback, and I'm hearing a visual setback. Well, currently in the zoning district, there, I believe it's a zero lot line, so there is no lot line here, correct? Michael had asked me during the application with the other staff members present, where's the lot line? And I said, there isn't. The lot line is the green. I don't need a lot line. So perhaps I should, we should subdivide the property and put the property line one foot outside the stone structure. But I was trying to not go down that path of circumventing the system, but simply just come in and say, okay, the ordinance allows for a legal description of, a meets and bounds description of the landmark designation. Keep that at one foot outside the structure. Then anything that's immediately against it or attaching to it has to come to HPC, and anything outside that would not have to.
This is probably getting a little ahead of where you want to be, and I understand that and respect that, but if it were one foot, can you, in your opinion, completely develop around it as long as you don't violate that, so you can put something above it, you can put something to the side of it?
Forgive me for the interruption, but that's not germane to tonight's discussion. And I would caution everyone that we're not here to talk about what might be, what might not be. Is it possible to? We're simply here to discuss the HPC's decision. I am echoing the comments from Mr. Lambert stated at the HPC, and of course, the incomparable chairman, Mr. Zilmer. It's a difficult thing to constrain, but we need to do that in order for the integrity of the process, so.
Fair enough. I think that's all my questions for now. Thank you.
Floor is open. Mr. Swanson, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for the examples of other buildings. I appreciate that. I guess what struck me is that all of those other buildings were in the historic district. And Michael, would all of them have required HPC approval? The Atlas Chicken Shack, the Pure Oil Building, they're all in the historic district. Dodson Place.
In several of those cases, such as the Atlas Chicken Shack, they're owned by separate owners. So it depends on who was bringing the petition forward, but it would still be considered how a development would impact a historic structure.
So my point is, building was still allowed up to, very close to those structures, with HPC consent and advice, if you will.
Correct. I wasn't here when some of those projects were done, so I don't know if they went in front of HPC, but today, that would be the process, yes.
And my point there is, it's still possible to build something on the red area in this map up here, but it would just require HPC approval.
Yes, the red area is about historic significance. It's not about development potential.
Okay. So I guess the way I see it, it seems to me that it's a reasonable compromise to remove the large green area and maintain this red area. And having HPC involvement, if it comes to that, seems to me to be prudent. So I agree with the map as written. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else, unless, oh, Mr. Kilburg?
Michael, I had a question. If at some point in time, the decision's made to demolish the stone structure, what is the effect then on the setbacks, the red area? In other words, does HPC still exercise any control over those, that portion of the site that we're discussing here?
I don't want to speak for the HPC because I don't know what the determination would be, but there is significance to the property as well as the structure that's on the property. So a demolition procedure follows the same procedure as a historic landmark designation. So there'd have to be the argument made for both the land that would be designated and the building that is still, the structure that's still there. So again, I don't want to presuppose what the HPC would say because that would be...
What element would remain that would have any historic significance?
Again, the commission may find that the land still has some value, so I don't want to, again, presuppose what they may or may not say. Pardon? So again, you know, if a demolition permit came forward, you know, if it was a complete demolition, I would make a staff evaluation of that request, and then the HPC would react to my evaluation. I can't predict in the future what they're going to say. I apologize. I just don't know how to answer that question.
What element would remain there that would have any historic significance? I mean, you...
This feels off-topic.
I believe Mr. Kilburg is getting at, if, in fact, the land is determined as historical, is that the purpose? Because there was a comment made that this might be veering off topic, but I think I know where you're getting at.
Well, I mean, as far as the developer, I think that would be important because that becomes a pretty important issue then, because if you have the square or the, what is that? Well, yeah, if this blacksmith shop's removed, there's still historic issues then that could potentially need to be addressed. In other words, if the council or if it was brought forward, the decision was made to demolish it, that would still hang over the site then, right?
Potentially, yes.
Okay. Well, I can see then why the developer would have concerns about it. I mean, I heard there, Mr. Patzelt, referenced the flow, the flow area that came out of the old mill race.
Correct.
Would something like that be considered potentially historic?
Could be considered potentially historic. It's the last remnant in that stretch of the east bank that has the mill race right-of-way still there. Whether the commission feels it's got enough significance without the structure there, that's a call that they have to evaluate.
Was there any discussion in regard to that at the HPC meeting?
In regard to if the structure was gone, and, no, we don't presuppose or discuss what may be. We strictly look at whether there's historic significance in the parcel that's being proposed to be, the designation's being reduced to. We actually purposely do not discuss development or future scenarios because those are all potential, and we try to focus on what has historic significance and what does not.
Well, I guess the point I'm just trying to make is, I can see maybe the relevance for the argument as it relates to these distances, because it does come into play other things that could potentially lie down the road. If, in fact, at some point in time, let's say that Shodin's requests demolition, and we arrive at a decision that it would be demolished, then we still have pretty, actually, a larger area of the parcel that would come into play than the stone structure itself, right? I mean, I think, looking at it here, if the dimensions are appropriate in this visual, the square footage would obviously be greater than the stone structure itself. Is that a safe assumption?
If the commission decided there was still historic significance, again, I can't presuppose what the commission would determine if the structure isn't there.
No. All I'm saying is, though, I could see as a developer that you're probably trying to get to the point where you're going to have less issues if, in fact, a decision would be made to demolish it. Is that correct?
Yes, and I understand where you're coming from, but again, the question before the HPC was not about what the future development may or may not be.
Understood.
It was about what is historic significance about this parcel. Yes.
That's a hypothetical, but it's a potentially real hypothetical.
Real hypothetical.
Play with that a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Marks, sir.
I'm just going to ask as simply as I can, because I think this is what Alderman Kilburg was asking. Whether that structure is there or not, that area in the red is historic, period, correct? Unless it goes in front of the HPC to change that designation. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, that clarifies it for me. Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else from the dais? Before I recognize Ms. Mayor for a second time, and Mr. Bruno for a second time. Mr. or Ms. Mayor, then Mr. Bruno?
As I understood it from Michael's presentation during the HPC meeting, the, we are deeming the structure to be the historic significance, and this is the boundary around the structure that is held in respect to the structure, so that what does adjoin the structure is significant in how it treats that connection. And just like the community hospital building, just like the creamery, how the building itself that you're connecting or adjacent to it, it either needs the space as a setback, or it needs to connect in a way that the HPC approves. That's how I understand this boundary, and I think that it's right, because I do think that the developmental, the part of the site that can be developed is going to either join or not join to this building. And it's not, we don't want to govern the whole building that you, if there were to be a developed property here, this is the right boundary, I think, based on what I heard previously about how...
I think it's, Mr. Lambert, I'm going to turn to you as well. I think it's dangerous to speculate, again, as to what may or may not happen. And I just don't want to go down that road.
But what I'm saying is that whatever happens, it's not just the wall of the structure that's historic. It is the space around it and how...
It's the boundary shown currently with HPC.
Right. I'm supportive of this boundary, and I think that it's correct, and I hope that you can develop on the property something similar to all the great projects that you've done in Geneva. I think I vote in favor, I will vote in favor of this.
Mr. Mayor, can I?
Yes, sir.
Again, we went one foot outside of the structure with our line, so that in, there's no way we could attach, touch, or be up against the structure. The 21 feet, the 20 feet, and the 41 feet, and some distance to the north, they were all very subjective, in my opinion. The 41 feet, turns out that Michael just said, just take it all the way to your property line. Okay? It wasn't, somebody buried something there, there was a mill race there, just take it up to your property line. And that's why I'd somewhat sarcastically say, well, even though it's public property, it's the park district, that should be perhaps historically protected, if they wanted to build something. The 20 feet to the south, it was a 20 feet. Maybe one feet is too tight, and perhaps there's some dimension between the 20 and the one feet and the 21 feet and the one foot. If the stone structure was set back further south off the right-of-way, again, to the north, Michael said, just take it up to the right-of-way, to the end of the property. So they were very, I believe they were very subjective, and that's where this argument or debate or arm wrestling set in between Michael and, Michael and myself.
But for instance, on the hospital site, the boundary of the historic designation was the whole property.
Well, the...
And yet you built a building around it that...
Yeah, I have, there, it's not just the whole site, it's, what is it, mile, two miles, square mile area?
District, yeah, right.
And if we are, or we want to protect the area, sure, keep the anchor in hand. Well, why don't we take all of Geneva and let HPC protect all of Geneva? Just trying to be, what are we trying to landmark here? And I believe the intent was not the green box or the green rectangle, and all of the testimony, if you go back and read it, it was all about this stone remnant structure that, nobody knew where it was at until we had, as we all dubbed it, we're going to peel this onion back, and we're going to see where it lands. And now that we found where it lands, all of a sudden, we're going to say, even though we dug on the east side to see if there was any other remnants, foundations, or structures, there wasn't, well, let's take 21 feet. Let's go to the south, there's nothing there, we dug down, let's take 20 feet. And on the west, let's just take it to the property line. And it, to me, is just very subjective as to how we came up with those dimensions, and that's why I'm politely disagreeing with those dimensions.
Mr. Bruno, I believe you were next, is that correct? And Mr. Kocerog? Anyone else who's not yet spoken, just raise your hand, and I'll be sure to recognize you.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I don't think the council should get too far ahead of itself. If that, if that building disappears, that is very much a hypothetical as to whether the commission would want to maintain that landmark for that property. But when it comes down to it, it's this body that determines whether that stays landmark. And I think Michael Lambert was trying to communicate, I got it, about, you know, there are spaces, you know, we landmark battlefields, things happened here, just things happened here, it can be historic. Maybe this wouldn't rise to it. But I do want to offer a correction earlier when I did say public use. Thank you for calling me out on that, that was incorrect usage. Just adaptive reuse, whether it's public or private or whatever. I think that gives it the breathing room to be the, what it conceivably could be during adaptive reuse, but mea culpa on that in terms of my terminology. Thank you.
Mr. Kavan and Mr. Kocerog?
Thank you. I can definitely see the applicant's point and in what they're, and what they're looking at here. And everything that I have always heard, and I understand that we still talk about historical significance and what used to be on that site, well, what's on there now is four walls of a crumbling building. And if they're able to be saved, I think that that's fantastic. So I certainly think that the structure needs to be protected. If there needs to be an extra 40 feet on this side, and 21 on this one, and 20 on that one, if the goal is to keep what's there, is there, I mean, the rest of the most of that parcel is gravel and dirt. I mean, there isn't anything else on there, and I'm hoping at some point in time, you know, there will be some fantastic project. So from my standpoint, as long as that wall portion is protected through this application right here, I would be okay with that, guessing I'm probably in the minority, but wanted to go ahead and share that in case anybody has any thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kocerog?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just wondering if Mr. Lambert might explain a little bit more of the boundaries that were here, because I was getting some more deliberate reasons when I was watching the HPC meeting than you were just picking things out of the air as he sort of characterized it for you. So I wanted to give you an opportunity to tell us why you chose 20 feet, 21 feet, things like that.
Sure, thank you. It isn't arbitrary. The only line that is arbitrary is the line to the south, and it's based on the historic nomination that was submitted for the circa 1846 to 1945 period of significance. It's not just an opinion I came up with. And to correct the record a little bit, the nomination included a report that was attached to the nomination for the property that included the historic evolution that was known at that time in 2017. And yes, it is true that if you read the transcripts, the property or the nomination was discussed mostly about the building, because that was the hot topic, even though I had suggested to the applicant and the owner at the time that perhaps a smaller boundary should be looked at.
Just trying to give you that exhibit. Michael, let's talk from if you needed it. There was a few slides, the one with the...
Yeah, I don't, I'm not going to worry about that. So to answer your question, the north boundary was selected, because if you read the historical documents, you read the advertisements that appeared for over 75 years, they refer to the building, whether it was the blacksmith shop, the carriage shop, the paint shop, whatever, at the east end of the bridge. So I felt it was significant to tie the property to the east end of the bridge at the State Street property. The west boundary took in the historic route of the mill race. Again, the only segment that has not been redeveloped on the east side of the bank. And for those of you who, you know, don't recall, you know, Geneva is here because of the industry that developed along the Fox River, so it's a significant part of Geneva's history, even though it has been altered and modified. The east boundary is set one foot beyond, what I was able to scale off was the Rystrom addition for the blacksmith shop, that the Rystroms added to their carriage shop when they took over the property. And again, the south, there were people on the commission, there were commissioners who felt that it should go to the leg, there's an actual south leg that goes out to the shoreline, basically, of the property. I felt that it could go to there, but I was trying to strike a compromise, keep some space there and give the shoreline to the development that might occur at some point. The shoreline has changed and ebbed and flowed as floods and modifications have been done to create Island Park and what have you, so I thought it was reasonable not to include the shoreline and recognize that there was some vacant land to the south of the building that had always been there. The only, you know, the only parcel that's ever been described for that property until the Mill Race Inn was established in 1933, basically is an 1847 document that identifies a 250-foot by 100-foot lot from the west side of the mill to the center of Bennett Street. And I didn't think that was appropriate. I went through that at the Historic Preservation Commission. So again, it's not arbitrary. It was looking at all the historic record and trying to figure out what was attached to this limestone building over time that fell within that period of significance from 1846 to 1945.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. That was all my questions.
Anyone else from the dais? Ms. Burkhardt?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I mean, I guess I came tonight thinking that an agreement had been reached, and this had gone through the HPC, and the applicant was comfortable with it, so I would really be loathe here on the dais to, you know, change the envelope around this building to one feet in each direction when, again, the process has been followed, and I certainly would need a lot more time to look into this and dig into it if I was being asked to make that kind of change tonight. I'm comfortable with what's in front of us, but that's where I am right now. Thank you.
Council members, are we prepared to vote on this matter? The matter is, as stated, the record provided by the HPC, the language within item 12, I believe it's F. Ms. Ruby?
Thank you. Just a clarification. So an aye vote supports the HPC's recommendation for the 2021 and 41?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Ms. Fenari, whenever you're ready, please take the roll. A simple majority, ladies and gentlemen.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kocerog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
The item has been adopted by the city council with 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes. Believe it or not, folks, we're at new business. Anyone from the audience, any new business for the benefit of the council or community from the dais? I will entertain a motion to adjourn the city council meeting. Motion by Mr. Marks. All in favor of adjourning, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, and we'll take, what, 30 minutes to transition the committee of the whole?
Two seconds.
Two seconds.
Go ahead, get that off. Chop, chop. That's what I'm talking about.
Good evening, everyone. Just waiting for a few stragglers to get back in their seat over there. Good evening, welcome to the committee of the whole meeting this Monday, May 2, 2022. My name is Alderman Gabriel Cavan. I represent the 4th Ward along with Alderwoman Amy Mayer. First order of business, first item of business is to call this meeting to order. Second item, recommend suspending the rules to permit Councilmember Cavan to chair this meeting and to vote on all action items on this agenda. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
All right. Motion made by Marks, seconded by Kocerog. Item number three, approve.
Voice vote.
Oh. It's okay. They told me to go fast, it's almost 10 o'clock. It's been a long time, a long time. A voice vote is sufficient, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? The vote is unanimous. Item number three, approve committee of the whole minutes from April 18, 2022. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Bruno, seconded by Alderwoman Burkhardt. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it is unanimous. That brings us to items of business. 4A, consider draft resolution waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the purchase of an RC mower from Brown Equipment Company in an amount not to exceed $59,426.00. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Kocerog, seconded by Alderwoman Mayer. All those in favor, indicate by saying...
I'll give you a brief introduction. So you may recall during the budget cycle, we actually talked about this item. This is a remote-controlled brush mower, so instead of renting a regular mower and having our crew go down into detention ponds, this is a mower that can go in the detention pond unmanned. The crew member will stay in their truck and operate it, so we wouldn't have to rent the equipment, we would now own the equipment, we can do it in all kinds of weather, and the purchase would be split between the general fund, the electric fund, and the wastewater fund. So if you have any questions, I have Superintendent Landers here, but we did kind of give you a brief preview of that during the budget cycle, if you recall.
Stephanie, just a quick question. I'm not opposed to it. You know, it's going to be used on some SSA properties.
Correct.
Should some of that be charged to the SSA?
The SSAs actually don't have the funding to support that, and since we're going to be using it all over the city, we thought it was best.
That's fine, that's mine.
Alderwoman Mayer?
I believe during the budgeting process, we were promised a demonstration.
I do have video. I'm happy to send it to all of you.
Please forward the video.
Absolutely, absolutely. I'll go sit back in my chair and do that right now.
Alderwoman Ruby?
Thank you. Nate, I want to know how you decide who gets to drive, who gets the control on that? Are you going to start like a contest?
You know, yes, we're just drawing names out of a hat and see what happens. Open it to all people.
Open it to the community.
It does have a little, there's some finesse to it, for sure. We had two guys use it this past year, and they really liked it, really enjoyed it, so...
Any other questions or comments? All right, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Item 4B, consider draft resolution declaring surplus property and authorizing the disposition of the new Holland Skid steer and associated parts. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Mr. Marks? Seconded by Bruno. Stephanie?
So this is basically housekeeping. We are declaring surplus, the Holland Skid steer, because we got our new Bobcat Skid steer that was ordered in fiscal year 2022, and it is now in service, so now we are asking to dispose of the Skid steer and all of its attachments. Again, Superintendent Landers will answer any relevant questions.
Any questions or comments from anyone? Okay, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it is unanimous. Item 4C, consider draft resolution authorizing execution of a contract with FH Passion, SN Nielsen and Associates LLC in the amount not to exceed $33,848.51 for demolition of the Prairie Green Farmhouse and Landscape Restoration. Do we have a motion? Mr. Marks?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bruno. Stephanie?
Okay, so this project is the demolition of the farmhouse located at the Prairie Green on Peck Road. The fire department has identified the farmhouse as an ideal location for a practice burn. After the burn, a contractor will remove the remains of the house, demolish and remove the foundation, backfill and restore the site. We are utilizing a public job order contract provided by Passion and Associates to the city of Aurora. So again, that's like a competitive bid type of project. All services are previously bid and prices have been agreed upon for the duration of that contract. I will tell you, this has been a very long process. We started this back pre-COVID, just getting things ready and disconnecting services. And so it's kind of nice to start seeing things moving along. The controlled burn does require the fire department to get permits from the IEPA, so there are things that they have to follow. But other than that, on the actual demolition, if you have any additional questions, I do have Brian Davids, our associate engineer here, and then if he can't answer them, I've got Rich Babica, and if he can't answer them, I'll make it up because Chief Antonori is on vacation for a change.
Mr. Marks?
Stephanie, one question. It doesn't have anything to do with the barn?
No, at this point, because there had been some discussion about whether the barn could be saved. I did approach back, way back in 2018 or 19, the Park District, they were not interested in using the barn, but we're, we're right now just taking care of the house structure, and then we can work on what we want to do with the other structure.
Okay, so there's no cost savings if we put the barn in?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay, thank you.
And that one's going to be a whole different.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Hopefully the fire chief lets us be involved in that burn again.
Yes, he did. I believe that the burn is being scheduled for early June, June 10th, 11th and 12th. And he will, like we've done in the past, put out an invitation for all of the council members. If they would like to participate, they will be able to do so.
Highly recommend that if you do, because it is very interesting. I will tell you that.
Alderwoman Burkhardt?
Stephanie, we tried to sell this house too, right?
We did. We did put it out for bid again back, I think, in 2019, and we received zero bids while I had had some people call with, express an interest. Nobody actually bid on it, and I made sure that the people who had called all received a copy of the bid, so.
Very good. Thank you.
Anybody else? Any comments or questions prior to the vote? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Nine in the affirmative, one in the negative. All right, that brings us to agenda item number five, public comment, new business. Anybody have anything else that they would like to talk about tonight that we haven't already today? Alderman Kilburg?
Yes, shout out to Paul Darrow and family on the soft opening of their Country Village meets in the fifth ward. But they've been operational now for about 10 days, I would say. It's a little over a week. I think it was a week ago Saturday that they had their first soft opening. And if you haven't had an opportunity to be inside the business, it's certainly worth taking some time to stop by and walk through. They made a dramatic overhaul of that building and the floor space and the fixtures and everything as it relates to a, an excellent meat market are there. It's, it's very impressive and a nice addition to the community and especially to the east side.
Thank you. Anybody else? Alderwoman Ruby?
Thank you. Dean, I thought you were going to say thank you to our neighbors, so I'll do it. We, we organized a little community cleanup along the Prairie Path on Sunday. In under two hours, we collected six giant garbage bags full of debris. So we're going to do it again. I don't know when, but I will reach out to people and hopefully, everyone who did it loved it. Kids actually had a blast, which is interesting. But yeah, it was a huge success and we're going to do it again. So thank you to everyone who participated, and hopefully we'll get even more next time.
Now, I think as you drive around Geneva right now, especially the fact that we don't have a lot of foliage on and there's areas that haven't leafed out yet that could use some cleanup. And there are, you know, there are other areas in the community. So if you're motivated and you want to get some of your neighbors involved in an Earth Day project, this is a great time of the year to do that. We've had some water issues as it relates to what we're working on over there. But there's a lot of debris collected along the bike path. And as Becky pointed out, we did get quite a bit of that removed and there's still more to do. But thanks to all those neighbors that stepped up. I think we had over 30 people there that were a part of it, so, well done.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any last minute items? If not, do I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Marks? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, that's it, folks. Thank you very much.